Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask my colleagues to please unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. LoPera?
Present.
Mr. Meta? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the school committee to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. To have this discussion in an open meeting would compromise the safety of our students and staff. The committee will return to public session at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I'll ask my fellow members, superintendent, and staff to log off from this public session and join the executive session using the Zoom link sent out by Ms. Sullivan. We'll see you in a moment. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. Committee just returned from an executive session for the purpose of discussing the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. To have this discussion in an open meeting could compromise the safety of our students and staff. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the May 10th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabarellano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The interpretation feature has been activated. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you were signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. Before we move on to our official business, I want to let the public know that I have decided to push the vote on the proposed school mergers to our next meeting on May 24. A few of our members were not able to attend the May 10th meeting, so we wanted to give them time to review the material and meet with staff. And for big votes like this, I like to have at least two meetings in between the proposal and the vote to allow time for the public to share their thoughts, questions, concerns, or support. We will not take a vote tonight on the proposed mergers of the Shaw Taylor and Philbrook schools. That vote will take place at our next meeting on May 24. Thank you to all the school communities who continue to engage with us on these proposals. The committee will begin this evening by holding a public hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program, the school year 2324. Under state law, each year, the committee must vote by June 1st whether the Boston Public Schools will admit non-residents. Do we have any speakers to testify on school choice issue, Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no one signed up to testify on the school choice issue.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. The committee looks forward to receiving a presentation on the Mass School Choice Program later this evening with a vote to follow at our next meeting. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program, the school year 2324. We will then move on into our regular meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Would you please call the roll, Ms. Sullivan?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The hearing is adjourned unanimously.
Thank you. We will begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 26, 2023, school committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Good evening, Madam Chair and school committee members. Given our full agenda tonight, I'm going to keep my soup report brief and I'm going to focus on an update on our summer and summer registration and just a few bright spots as we had a lot of events last week. So in terms of our summer programming, it's really shaping up to be one of the strongest yet. As I've shared in the past, we're investing in the largest number of seats and ranges of opportunities, especially inclusive opportunities that we ever have for our students. We've added capacity close to 17,000 student seats and these include our fifth quarter, our early focus, our high school credit recovery, our expanded school year, or known as ESY, and the Exam School Initiative, among others. We launched our registration earlier than ever this year at parent request. We heard from parents that they were trying to make sure students had opportunities early so that they could register them. And so we actually opened it on March 22. And to date, we've received 6,000 applications and we have many recruitment events that are actually happening this month and the beginning of June. We plan to have a robust summer programming, building off the great work that we started with many of our community-based partners and all of our schools that participated last summer. This was one of the first things I got to go to unofficially, but to see the many programs that were operating and how many of our students were enjoying them. Upcoming events that will host registration opportunities will include the Boston Educational Development Fund, or BEDF, event, which is taking place at the lawn on D tomorrow, Thursday, May 11, and the Bike and Kite Festival, which will take place on Saturday, May 20. In addition, all of our family liaisons, our Welcome Center staff, our OME staff and parent specialists will continue to support families in the registration process, both at the school and at these events. Again, our goal for this summer is to deliver more inclusive seats for students through additional partners, locations, and opportunities to intentionally offer fun and enrichment. And this, again, really came in talking with SPEDPAC about making sure that our special education students had lots of opportunities in the summer. So we'll be very excited to see that participation throughout the city. As of today, we've learned from our city colleagues that we've received approximately 2,000 applicants for the 2,000 city agency jobs available. And that's tremendous. I think last year, it was slow in building up and I believe that there were some jobs still available. This year, our goal is to make sure all of those jobs are filled by our young people. There are an additional 5,000 jobs available through nonprofit partners. And so we will, we've talked with the city and the city is still gathering information about those applications for the 5,000. And because they're separate applications for each nonprofit and they did it slightly differently this year, so the nonprofits are actually doing that registration process. The data isn't as easy to aggregate. So that is something that they're going to work with us and my hope is at the next school committee meeting to be able to get an update on that particular bank of summer jobs. We have used social media platforms, our family liaisons and counselors, our pick career specialists to really work school by school and community by community to make our students, you know, help our students become aware of the opportunities for jobs and summer programming and to encourage as much participation as possible. So we will continue to do that and we will continue to keep the school committee informed. Many, many bright spots last week. This is just a fun time of year with so many celebrations and opportunities for students to showcase their skills and what's meaningful to them. First off, we had the Ellis Arbor Day event. In honor of Arbor Day, students at the Ellis Elementary in Roxbury planted trees in the school's outdoor garden and learned about the impacts of green infrastructure, the Heat Island Effect, and urban gardening, all while using the features in their own schoolyard as a case study. Students planted native species, seeds in pots and seedlings in the rain garden, as well as five trees throughout the school's land. The trees were gifted to the city of Boston from the Royal Foundation, which was following the Urshot Prize Award Ceremony when we had the Royals here and their visit. And so this was just a wonderful green event and we thanked the Ellis School and the students for their participation. It was also, I had the opportunity with WGBH. They had an event called the Momentum Inclusion Event and it was hosted by the Massachusetts Women's Political Caucus, co-hosted with GBH. Women leaders were invited to discuss diversity, equity, and inclusion in government and education, as well as in the private sector. Mayor Wu and I had the opportunity to serve on the panel together and highlighted several things that we're proud to be doing and working on together. Of particular note, we discussed how the district is stabilizing. We spoke about, you know, the fact that despite chronic absenteeism increasing nationally, really stemming from COVID-19 pandemic and the after effects. I'm really encouraged by what we're seeing here in Boston and the work that we're doing, you know, with our attendance team, the work that we're doing in our schools with our student support teams, really reaching out to our students, incentivizing, you know, coming to school, celebrating coming to school and finding some of the reasons why students might struggle to come to school and helping to support them. And because of all of this, we're bucking the national trend. And, you know, our chronic absenteeism rates, as we've shared several times here, have been declining and we're hoping and working hard to make sure they continue to do so. I also talked about BPS's Office of Retention, Cultivation, and Diversity's Degree Completion Partners Program. In this, we were talking about how we've successfully connected with some of our local colleges and universities and national colleges to provide discounted degrees to our BPS employees and to make sure that, you know, this is helping with our pipeline for our educators of color to be able to get degrees that they began or they're looking to begin and to do it at a cost that is affordable. We also spoke about our work in expanding early college opportunities and career pathways for students at the high school level and explained how this supports students as they learn and they grow, you know, in familiar environments and helps to really be able to build up academic rigor, to build up, you know, their resilience to navigate the college campus and to find out supports that they can rely on when issues arise. And this is all with our, you know, look to increase students being able to go on from college, from high school to college more seamlessly and successfully and to persist to be able to graduate. It really was an honor to share the stage with Mayor Wu and to be in the presence of so many wonderful women leaders. Boston Partners in Education, we attended the Big Cheese Gala. I had the opportunity to speak at it. This is a fundraiser for Boston Partners in Education. It happened this past Friday and really this was to just stress and showcase the longstanding partnership of Boston Partners with BPS in their role of helping to make sure our students see and experience different career pathways through the eyes of guest speakers and mentors who Boston Partners arranges to come in to classrooms. So not only do they help with our literacy by arranging people from the industries to come in and read to our students, but we've really had a focus this year on exposing our middle and high school students to why somebody chooses a particular career, how they entered it, what's been great about it, what's been a struggle about it. And, you know, clearly, you know, what the students have said is being able to hear from professionals that, you know, look like them and who talk about their shared experiences so that they can hear it, that this really helps them to dream big and to hope and to broaden their horizons as they think about career choice. So that was a wonderful evening to be able to share with Boston Partners and again, we thank them for their two decades of continued partnership with us in BPS. Shout out to our school leaders, to our educators, to our nurses, to our school lunch workers. I just want to shout it, you know, shout out to them just for all of the work that they and our pairs have done all year. This has been appreciation week and day over the last two weeks for each of the groups. And, you know, truly, as I've said to them, you know, this really is about the important role that they play, you know, in the lives of our young people, the work that they do all year long with our students and with our families. And so just, you know, a big thank you. This morning, I was able to to join Secretary Tuttweiler at the Josiah Quincy Upper School where he was celebrating teacher appreciation and we had the chance to talk with many of the teachers and social workers, counselors and nurse at the Josiah Quincy and to just celebrate, you know, at the upper school, the wonderful work that they're doing, symbolic of the wonderful work that's happening throughout our district. In closing, later tonight, you will hear an update on the systemic improvement plan and all of the progress that we've been making in each of the key areas of it. You'll hear how we are really reimagining our work in the areas of operations and academics in support of the plan. And so I just, you know, I'm looking forward to our team being able to share that with you and just want to thank you and that concludes my report, Chair.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee. Want to remind everyone about our norms that we each have five minutes, one to two questions. And I'd like to remind BPS staff to also be briefed in your responses. Thanks. Questions? No questions? Dr. Alkins?
No, thank you for the report, particularly with the summer enrollment. I think at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about more stats in relation to the seats that were available, particularly for special needs students and thinking a little bit more about that and sort of the benefit that that particularly yields for them through for the summer. And then have you all thought a little bit more about the way that you want to sort of capture moving forward the data on the efficacy of the summer programming and then how it translates into progress in the upcoming academic year?
Sure. So through you, Chair. So I think we're waiting for sort of critical mass on the seats and then I think what will be helpful to the committee and it may be at the next one because we have a number of the recruitment events coming up, is to be able to give you a broader sense of how the seats are being filled. I think for us, you know, the, what we heard loud and clear from our special education parents was, you know, that they, besides ESY, that they want to make sure that there are plentiful opportunities for students, you know, regardless of disability area, to be able to participate. So we're working, you know, on partners who have been creating inclusive environment previously, expanding with them since we know they have the ability to be able to serve a broad spectrum of student and so working hard with them and then also talking with the partners who have wanted to increase and try, you know, much like last year, you know, we did this with our MLE students, our multilingual students and created that capacity. So we're really excited about it. We see this as the first step, you know, for our students with disabilities to be able to more broadly participate. We're hoping, you know, to really learn from this summer and most importantly, with our partners, to better understand what are the additional supports we can provide to help make sure that our partners can offer programming that's truly inclusive. So we'll plan at the, I think by the next one, we'll be able to, we'll kind of probably be more than halfway at that point with registration to give you a better breakdown of the types of programming that we're offering and, you know, who's filling the seats. And then as far as the data piece goes, I will have, I will ask the summer team to include that in the presentation. I know with Boston After School and Beyond, who's been our partner in this work for a long time. That's been an area that they've worked hard with us to capture, which is what is the impact of the specific program? Besides, you know, the student having fun and enjoying and relaxing. And, you know, each program is different in, you know, in what its intent is. You know, some are around physical wellness, some around social emotional, some around academic enrichment. But I think we can give you, you know, a kind of a broad enough sense of the kind of data we'll be capturing.
No, thank you. And I mean, I think this is also a great opportunity to sort of lean in and, you know, you know, Mr. Cadet Hernandez, I'll also yield to you just also thinking about what other large urban school districts in particular have done to even look at their own summer programming like New York. So I think it's a really great opportunity to really expand and think about the different ways in which we're capturing data and the conclusions. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Dr. Alkins, thank you for asking that question too because it was where my head was going. I have two questions to sort of piggybacking on it. I am interested, as is Dr. Alkins, in sort of the outcomes data. And I think some of that is just going to be sort of a reflection back on like what has happened with a respect to your point, Superintendent, that the programs are different. The ones where I am probably the most curious about, it doesn't mean the other programs don't carry significance, are the ones that have an intentional focus on accelerating learning, whether that's for students to have better access into the exam schools or students who are struggling in various areas and need a sort of a remediation or a sort of push in a different direction. And so like, I'm just curious about the efficacy there. But what would also be interesting, and it may not be for this year because you inherited some of the summer planning before you got here, but for future work, I think it would be an interesting way for us to get this information, which is instead of like what has happened, it's a little bit about like what do we want to happen as a result of the investment? And then we do the look back around what has happened. So like both things can be true. We've only, in my tenure here, only talked about, and we talked about this last time, we've only talked about enrollment as a goal and not about what we want to have happen as a result of that enrollment and then to see if we achieved it. And so that's sort of the cycle that I'm looking at and probably where I want us to be going in all of our conversations, you know? Any of the particular programs have that level of goal setting embedded in them? And if they do, that would also be good to know. Special guest star.
Through you, Chair. That's right. I think, you know, the idea of impact data, right, versus the type of data we typically will say of attendance, you know, some low-level survey, things like that. We want to be able to shift to talk about the impact piece. I think some of this is in the planning of the programming. And to your point, that's something forward-thinking that we will need to do as we're thinking about who will be the partners at the summer programming and kind of leading them through that process. And for us to look across our student population and make some determination as to what are the kinds of impacts that would help ensure our students, if matched correctly, start the school year in a different place. Right? So like a good example, yesterday I had a wonderful meeting with leaders from the Haitian community and one of the things that they're well aware of is that there are a number, as in hundreds, of Haitian students who are either here and just arrived or coming. And typically, those students wouldn't enroll until September. Once, and at that point, we've missed a couple of months of being able to help to figure out, you know, who might need social emotional support, what kind of academic support they might need. Are they, you know, interrupted formal learners? And so there's a lot that we could do, even in informal programming, to be able to make those determinations and then match them, right, in their programming. I think that's the type of forward-thinking we want to do and look at time as a resource to help us get there. So this will be something for going forward as we do this, really outlining what our goals are with impact and then who are the partners that can align to that and through their programming, ensure that our young people are served in the way that we need them to be served.
And my second question is just around students with disabilities and program access. I'm curious if part of our plan, I can imagine being a parent with a disabled kid who's listening to us and it's like, your turn's gonna come soon. And it's very much what has been the sort of message in BPS around sort of equity access for disabled kids and kids with disabilities. I'm sort of curious, from a design perspective, like are we collecting disability-specific data around who we are unable to serve in summer programming so that next year, we build capacity for those families? So we're not in a phase two, like this is, we are done talking about maybe you'll get your turn in a summer program and we're actually building the capacity because we have the appropriate data to support partners in doing so?
Yes. So, yes. So I think that the, what the team sort of identified was a group of partners who last year had begun doing this thinking and starting to do some of this programming with students, you know, in some way, in some cases, fully inclusive, and in other cases, with students with particular disability area. We're picking up from there, asking those partners to continue that and to expand that. We're we're picking up from there, asking those partners to continue that and to expand that. At the same time, there, we're also talking with partners who didn't do that last year, but who are looking to. I think what will come out of this is 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 are there groups of students for whom we don't have deliberate planning? And then right away, that will be something we will immediately work toward for the future summer.
Copy. Yeah, because it becomes so interesting. So often the question is just like, do you have a disability or not? Versus real clarity around what the disability is, so that the program matches the need, right? I appreciate the thinking there. I am out of time. I have another set of questions, but I'll leave it to see if anyone else does.
Are there other questions from other members before we go back? All right, Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Chair, I'm gonna make you so proud. I'm doing two rounds only on this one, so. So proud of me.
Practice self-control. Thank you.
I'm so proud of myself. First round of questions is just around chronic absenteeism. You mentioned that we're on a decline. Is there any sort of update in numbers that you're giving us? And if you even have that sort of comparison data around what's happening nationally or even across the state, just so we get perspective, because as we both know, the number is probably still shocking.
Yeah, so state I don't, but I can say when I was at the last National Council of Great City Schools, most of the districts were reporting out in the forty still. Our last calculated is around thirty-five percent. And so I I think it that that is a decline, you know, last year we were low forties, so I think we were forty-four percent or forty-three percent. It isn't also, you know, specifically about the aggregate of the chronic absenteeism, it's about who's chronically absent, right? And so this is the part that we're really, you know, which schools have trends above the average and below the average as a way to try to support. So in many of our alternative eds, which get calculated in, part of what led a student into ed options was underlying issues that that cause chronic absenteeism. So you can imagine that some of the alternative eds have close to a hundred percent. Right? And so we're looking, what are the additional supports we can do for those students who are in there? So we're we're sort of trying to also kind of look at the schools by the groupings. You know, do we have schools that are non-alternative ed who have very high chronic absenteeism? Because those are the schools we're going to want to immediately get in. We had offered about thirty of the attendance grants. So that's another thing in in the transformation schools. Many of them went to the transformation schools. As we reported out last time, the transformation schools also saw some good decline with the chronic absenteeism. But that'll be one of the things we want to calculate this year is, did the, how impactful were the grants? You know, and did they work? Is that something we want to continue? Is that something we want to increase? And so I think there's going to be a lot of the crosswalking of the data. So it isn't just about thirty-five percent, it's about the who and the where. And then how do we continue to problem solve for those communities and with those communities?
Yeah. Thank you for that. And former, I started my career in a transfer school, and that is like the work and the folks there have been are oftentimes the best at helping us think about creative solutions to getting young folks in the door, because that has been, it's not a new problem, you know, it's like been the like historical work that's happening there. And I'm sure we're looking at best practices across the city, not just sort of like who's struggling, but who's also sort of winning the fight to see how how they're doing it.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. The last question I have is just about exam schools, because I suspect we'll hear a lot from families this evening as results have come out. I'm curious, the sort of plan for an update for us, and then any initial thoughts from you?
Yeah, so June, so June seventh, we're slated on the agenda to do a full update on the exam schools, so that that will, you know, I think, I think it's on everyone's mind, sort of where we are, how things are going. I, you know, from our perspective, you know, we, the the exam school invitations went out, as we said last Friday. We did have some of the families reach out with questions. We had set up what I think was a very successful system to ensure that families would have one conduit to ask the questions. So we ensure they got more, you know, immediate and good feedback on the questions that they were asking and accurate information. You know, we didn't have systemic issues, you know, and as I had reported before, you know, we we do have a new auditor in place. We did have a few individual cases that, you know, have to do with GPS and sort of like where an address, either an address was incorrect in Aspen. And so one of the things that I think we will do going forward is to really ask families to review the data in Aspen and make sure that their addresses are fully up to date. Streets are spelled correctly, you know, and and so forth. But none of those, we we did not see any systemic issue at all. And so we were able, given that it was handfuls, we were able to work individually with those families on what ultimately was a GPS issue. So.
Copy. If I this is, this is very honest of me, Superintendent. I have never asked about exam schools. It is usually the topic that I I sort of stay away from only because I care about high-quality rigorous options for all kids. And sometimes I think we get lost in the exam school sauce. But I am curious, as we're having conversations, and this may be for the June seventh update, or if not, if we don't do it sooner based on sort of public comment this evening. I am very curious to hear the number of students in the tier seven and eight categories who didn't get in, how many young people that is? And then as we're talking about building utilization and mergers and consolidations and space all the time, like, what is our, we know that these schools are high demand. And so like, when we have a high demand, what are we doing to increase the option? Is it another school? Is it annexing, we're talking about annexing other buildings across the city? Is it another annex? You know, like Nike drops a shoe and they don't just stop after people bought it, right? Like, we're gonna do a second drop because it's so good. And so I'm just sort of curious, like, where we're meeting the market in this conversation? And that's why I I will just sort of for the presentation, I'd be very curious about. I I suspect the number is not that big around how many young folks didn't get in who were initially invited. Even if the sort of noise becomes really loud. And so what can we do to serve the folks who want that sort of option? You know?
Yeah, so I I think that that is definitely going to be a longer conversation, right? For the June seven, with, I think what you're asking for is sort of the data set for us to be able to analyze, right? To be able to give you that, particularly, excuse me, particularly for the higher tiers, since we kind of move through the tiers, so they're like the last chosen. So that'll be something that we'll provide, you know, June seventh, it'll offer a rich conversation as to conjecturing like other buildings, other, you know, I think I share the same spirit that you do, which is we want all of our schools, right, to be of that quality and to be someplace that our parents feel very confident that their student is going to get at particularly the high school level, that early college and career rigor and education. And so that will, that is an underlying principle that we're working on in the Green New Deal as we think about the high school landscape and moving toward the early college and and career for all. And so there'll be more to come on that as we're starting to make some progress. You know, we're in partnership, partnership mode with that right now, trying to make sure that we look across the landscape of high schools, so that beyond the three current exam schools, there's plenty of good quality opportunity for for parents.
Yeah. Okay, I look forward to to that conversation and Chair. Yeah, and like, if it feels like it's loud tonight, maybe it's something we consider sooner. There's other decisions to make.
We'll see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Alkins and then Ms. Blanco Garcia.
Uh, Ms. Blanco Garcia hasn't gone yet, so I'll defer my time to her.
You're on mute.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent for the report. Yo quiero hacer un comentario y y me uno a la superintendente cuando hace la apreciación de los maestros.
Thank you, and, no siento, puede repetir otra vez, perdón.
Quiero hacer eco a la a la apreciación de la superintendente cuando estamos hablando de nuestros maestros en BPS.
Okay, thank you. So I also wanted to echo the appreciation we're doing to the teachers and the schools.
Sí, realmente nuestros maestros son héroes. He ha tenido la oportunidad de compartir muchas escuelas.
And really, our teachers are heroes, are our heroes. And I have had the opportunity to interact with them in different schools.
La Upper Queens, el escuela donde personalmente va mi hijo y tiene unos maestros maravillosos y la administración realmente está haciendo un trabajo increíble con los estudiantes.
And the Queen City, that's where my son goes. The teachers are amazing, and also the administration are doing incredible job with the kids.
Quiero felicitar al principal y a toda, a toda el staff, a los maestros. Y estoy muy feliz porque sé que va a continuar la enfermera que estaba casi a punto de cortarse esa posición y van a continuar las dos enfermeras que tiene la escuela que tanto lo necesita.
Um, I want to, I want to congratulate the principal, staff, educators, and also I'm so happy that the nurse will continue with that position. There was a position that it was going to. They would possibly to just cut down that position, but that's not gonna happen anymore. We will continue with two nurses. And it's their jobs, they're needed in that school.
Así mismo es la Blaston, Hurley, Orchard Gardens, y y estoy muy orgullosa del trabajo. Estos maestros, muchos de ellos, hacen con lo poco mucho.
Uh, just like the Blaston, Hurley, Orchard Gardens, all the teachers, the educators, they do a lot with the little resource that they have.
Quiero compartir con ustedes lo que viví hoy porque fui a visitar en personalmente la escuela Shaw.
What is the school?
La Escuela Shaw.
Shaw. Okay, so I wanted to share something with you.
Pierce Shaw.
Pierce Shaw. So I wanted to share something, especially something about what happened today. I went to visit the Pierce Shaw School today in person.
Y tuve la oportunidad de recorrer los pasillos, pude ir a los salones de clase, hablar con los maestros, con algunos estudiantes y algunos padres.
Um, I had the opportunity to walk, to go by the hallways, classrooms, talk to the educators, teachers, some students, parents.
Y quiero decirle en esta semana de apreciación del maestro, gracias por todo el trabajo maravilloso que todos ustedes están haciendo.
And this week of appreciation, of teacher appreciation week, just wanted to say that thank you for all of the amazing job that you all are doing.
Los maestros hacen un trabajo, tuve la oportunidad de compartir con la principal hoy y los maestros están haciendo un trabajo maravilloso. Es increíble ver como estos niños tienen esta destreza, cómo hablan, cómo dibujan. Yo estoy emocionada de verdad, me emocioné cuando tuve la oportunidad de estar con ellos hoy.
Um, yeah, the the amazing job that the teachers, the principal are doing, it's really incredible. Also, the skills that these kids have developed, the way they assert themselves, the way, the things that they draw, things that they're doing, it was very emotional.
Yo creo que es bueno que este amor que se desborda en esos pasillos, esto, este, esta escuela tan vibrante que es de comunidad pueda seguir así con este amor y esta tranquilidad que no, siento que no merecen incertidumbre, más bien merecen tranquilidad por el trabajo tan importante que están haciendo.
So I am, the love, the good love that they have, they show to themselves in the hallways, it's a vibrant community, a vibrant school. They deserve that peace or tranquility and not this sense of uncertainty, which they don't deserve.
Y finalmente, gracias, gracias por todo su trabajo, gracias por todo lo que están haciendo por nuestros niños y por el futuro que le espera a nuestros niños.
Again, thank you, thank you for all your work. Thank you for everything that you're doing for our kids, the children, and for their future.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Um, yes, this is going back to an earlier thought, particularly around chronic absenteeism and sort of a request to maybe hear from some of the, like those ed options and those alternative ed programs and just seeing how they're faring in terms of the capacity. And then even as I think more about their ability to serve particularly those chronic absentee students that might have disabilities and really thinking about how, yeah, just essentially how they're faring. You know, with with the shift and and anything and what levels of supports that they're getting and what other levels of supports they might need from that. So just a thinking out loud there.
Well, through each here, I I actually would like to, if if we're able to, before the calendar year is out, to be able to to have a short presentation on what our ed options are doing. They just, they do amazing work and where this is an area that we're really trying to put more resource back in for them. You know, recognizing that many of the students during the pandemic and after the pandemic will kind of lost their their footing. And they're just in a different place and they need either help to get back to where they want to be or to start a new, a new road. And that's very much what our alternative ed or ed options play, you know, in that. So we'll see what we're able to do. And if if not, we're not able to fit it in this calendar year, certainly I want to in the fall for next year. Because I think it's it's, you know, that, our strive program, there's so many things that I want school committee to to see and to and to hear from the great work that's happening. So thank you, Dr. Alkins. I I know that that they'll be very appreciative of you mentioning them.
Thank you. Before you move on, I just have one question. I know that we've, you know, for for years, every year, the exam schools have already had, always have had a pretty strong orientation for new students coming in. And I'm wondering, as part of our summer plans, are are the rest of the high schools planning a significant orientation for their new seventh or ninth grade students as well?
Yeah, through through your chair, this is something we're working with the leaders on, particularly the ones that have either moved back to seventh grade or taking in incoming, you know, new incoming ninth grade if they are seven to nine already. So this is an area that the secondary office, Dr. Lombardi, will be working on with them. Many of them have a formal orientation of some sort. But I think the schools that have moved back to seventh grade, there's there's a real need, you know, that transition is a rough one. You know, coming from six to seven. So where we stand ready to support them and, you know, as they're developing their plans for that. So we, again, that's something we can, you know, we can share out as part of a secondary report. But that is something that's an active conversation right now.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? During on the Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lo Para?
Yes.
Ms. Blanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have ten speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak. And I remind you, when you have thirty seconds remaining, the time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from the speaker's allotted time. All speakers will have three minutes. We will pause the timer while the testimony is interpreted into English.
In their constant request for authentic community engagement. There are no benefits to these school communities. Build new schools first, rather than further segregating and isolating school communities and directly causing instability which impacts enrollment at these schools. Mayor Wu's advisors have continually told us how this process would be so different from years before. Mayor Wu and Superintendent Skipper have continued the Manino and Walsh traditions of making decisions behind closed doors away from those directly impacted. They have done one thing very different. They have repackage their closed-door decisions as quote, "a commitment to transparency." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Oni Holly.
Hi, school community. And this is my first time, so I'm a little bit nervous. But thank you for allowing me to talk to you today about something that's affected our family. And I want to talk about the exam school waitlist process. It's something that my understanding was created by the school committee. And my understanding, actually, in talking with folks at BPS today, is that the waitlist wasn't even touched last year at BLS. And part of the problem was that they were over-enrolled. So I feel like you can't have a system where you have over-enrollment at BLS and a waitlist. I feel like that's creating false promises for families. And I think that this should be addressed. I feel like since the promise was made that kids could come off the waitlist, I want to propose that we have, in a good faith response, that you enroll students as families decline their invitations. So all the exam schools are very capable of taking in the number of kids that have been invited. So I propose that you just take in the kids one-to-one. If one family declines an invitation, have the waitlist be active and on a rolling basis invite students off the waitlist. I think that's the fair response if you choose in the future to not have a waitlist. I think that's a decision for another time. But since families have been counting on this, if they didn't get in the first time, I think that's only fair. I also don't think that BPS should wait till September to find out who doesn't show up or if anything's available. I think that families deserve to know their plans early and kids deserve to have right to enter the schools along with their peers and have the joy and excitement of entering in September. And also, I just want to say that having a waitlist and over-enrolling makes the waitlist meaningless. And I don't think it's the point of BPS to make this process all about keeping kids out of the exam schools. I know that we're working together to bring in really capable students. And if I can speak on behalf of my family, my child had an A-plus composite score. We live in Jamaica Plain and we're in tier eight. And unfortunately, he wasn't allowed to get into his school of choice. So there are many kids who are smart, who deserve a chance to go to one of the exam schools. And I think the other piece that didn't help my son is that he earned those 98.59 points just on his own. He wasn't given any additional 10 to 15 points. So I think that there are a lot of kids in his situation who deserve a chance. So that's all I'm asking you is to give these kids on the waitlist a chance. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mano Katsom Panakis.
Hello, Madam Chair, Committee Members, Superintendent Skipper. My name is Mano Katsom Panakis. And my daughter, a sixth grader, has been in PPS since K-1. She's a hard worker and exceptional student, and her grades prove that. Her composite score in your admissions policy flirts with perfection. At 4:45 PM this past Friday, she was told she wasn't good enough. Around 6:00 PM that same Friday, she found got busy with texts from her neighborhood friends announcing their invitations to the exam schools of their choice, many of them with lower grades and lower MAP scores. She asked why. I said, "Well, they're in different tiers. They get extra points because they're at a different school." I almost said, "You are an unintended consequence." But then I thought, "That's not appropriate to say when referring to a child." Then we looked closer and we noticed the mistakes. We've been living in the same address since she started school, yet the wrong tier was used to determine her eligibility. She was assigned her third choice when her second choice is her current school. I'm sorry to say, Superintendent Skipper, but the amazing system that you mentioned earlier still hasn't given us an official answer about the tier mistake in writing. And we emailed on Friday. We received a call this morning after leaving eight voicemails five days later to be told that they reran the numbers and she stays where she's at. No explanation, no transparency, no reasoning about how this was run and whether the whole system was run or not. Listen, I still believe that the old policy was flawed and the issues that it was creating had to be addressed. But we can do better. We live in Boston. We have the resources and the bright minds to do better. And if any of you think that this is good enough, then I'm sorry to tell you, you're failing the kids you signed up to help. My daughter deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Richardson.
All right, here we go. Good evening. My name is Pamela Richardson and I am a parent of a Sumner student. My family resides in both Roselandale and Matapan. I am also a BPS teacher, teaching since the fall of 2006. I am here to speak to three requests regarding the Sumner-Filbrick merger. Request number one is at the May 1st community meeting regarding this merger, there were four small group work sessions. And a glaring concern of every small group was the need to designate school leaders for the merged school as soon as possible. The school leadership team will be a crucial and integral component of implementing every aspect of this merger. It is critical to have the school leadership team for the merged school in place with yesterday as an honest deadline. This is a huge concern for members of both current school communities and a vital need for ensuring that the merged school is set up for success. Request number two is we are looking for a commitment that all current staff will know if they have a position at the merged school by January 2024. The district had announced a goal of doing this by January 2025, but we see this as very problematic. Staff will need to play a role in planning for the merged community. And the two groups of staff will need time to get to know each other and bond. We understand that the logistics of the budgeting and probable org process make it difficult for this to be 100% written in stone by January 2024. But we feel there's enough information available now that could provide a huge proportion of staff some level of certainty regarding whether they will have a position at the new school. So current and projected enrollment for both schools could be looked at by grade level and program area in order to determine if there are excess staff. Each grade level and program area could then be notified if that area has excess staff. The district could also look at staff data to see if there's staff that could possibly be interested in early retirement offers to offset potential job losses. And assuming that position cuts will be based on seniority, because at the May 1st meeting, the design team said that job cuts would have to be done in line with the BTU contract. So staff that are likely to either lose or keep their positions could then be informed. This enables staff time to consider their next move. And if their next move is to commit to the merged school, then they can participate in some of the planning work for the merger without also simultaneously worrying about whether or not they will have a job. Request number three is that we would like a process for naming and selecting a mascot for the new school to be created soon and possibly one that includes students to help build excitement among students and help with the process of starting to build a new school identity. We'd love for the school to have a name and mascot by the fall of 2024. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Young.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rachel Young. I'm a Sumner mom and a Roselandale resident. I'm speaking tonight about the proposed merger plan that was presented to the school committee at the last meeting. But first, before I've dived into the concerns we have with that plan, I just wanted to again state that the public records request that we filed in September of 2022 is still not answered and BPS is still not in compliance. They can't provide the emails that we asked for because of the deliberative process, but would not even tell us which policy was being deliberated. This is really not transparent and goes against everything that BPS is saying about how this process is supposed to be working. Concerning the plan itself, I found it to be lacking specificity and really anemic. If you noticed, it offered a one-year timeline for a school that in fact will be merging over two years, almost as if the plan was cut and pasted from the more accelerated proposed timeline for the Shaw and Taylor. We need a real plan that looks at the 24 months we have to merge our schools together and what we can hope to do with that extra year. That's going to be a really critical piece of time that we can use for so many productive things. It can be a period that we use for assuaging the fears of families that are hearing for the first time about the full inclusion model, which, as we heard at the May 1st meeting, was very scary to new parents. It can be used for recruiting Latino families, which still are not fully engaged in this process. It can be used for exploring new opportunities we have as a community, such as expanding our surround care program to be EEC certified. For the first time, we won't have lead paint peeling from our walls. We could get EEC certification, provide EEC vouchers, get EEC training, partner with other qualified surround care partners to really provide the quality surround care that our school deserves. That's just one suggestion about how we can use that time. But we need the support of the school administration and BPS to say, "This is also a priority of ours. We hear you. This is a great idea. Let's do it." But more importantly, put together a plan to do it. I'd also like to briefly just touch upon the REPT that was included in the proposed plan from last meeting. The proposed plan doesn't include information like SRI, the School Racial Imbalance, which is a standard metric that's used in evaluating racial equity of proposed school mergers. This is something that would look at how the school demographics relate to the larger community demographics. And I'd also like to point out, this is a concern that we parents have mentioned numerous times. And if you're going to say that this process engages us and includes us, then you need to at least acknowledge the concerns and questions that we have. The proposed plan and the REPT completely ignored our thoughts, ideas, and questions. We need this process to be more engaging. We need this process to be more transparent. Please listen to us tonight. Don't just recycle new ideas and say that's what the green is in Green New Deal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Peter.
Hello, my name is Lauren Peter. I'm a Sumner parent, Roselandale resident, design team member, and family council member. I question whether enough resources are being given to community engagement. What we have achieved thus far has been described as performative by many team members. We have requested home language-led meetings for more than a year now due to our two schools' high percentage of immigrant families. These have yet to be scheduled. Parents at the Sumner organized in conjunction with Councilor Mejia, a Latino-affinity group for family engagement at the Sumner. That group has already met for four times and already has two more meetings scheduled. We don't have access to the infrastructure of BPS. We just have cored volunteers doing childcare, a hard-working politician, and a desire to reach out to an underserved community. Show us that you can do better with our tax dollars. In order to mitigate harm with this after-the-fact REPT, it is extremely important to assign appropriate resources and a sense of urgency to this process. We will need three to four social workers for the first two years at minimum. Our social workers now have a huge caseload of assessments and their ability to provide extras like lunch bunch and circle work is lower than they would like. We would need at least two school nurses. Our school has students with high medical needs now, diabetes, frequent chronic illness. When our community merges, the stress on their ability to offer care will increase. At least two family liaisons. I encourage you to read the job description of a family liaison. Due to the efforts of our family liaisons now, we have supported families in need due to homelessness, housing instability, illnesses like cancer in the family, providing food in multiple ways to families having food insecurity. This is just a part of their community-facing work. Now, think about all of the work they do during the school day with individual students needing an extra support. These roles are just part of the building blocks that make up a school. I ask for clarity for our staff on what the future will bring. I noted in the superintendent's report a discussion of aid to BPS staff pursuing additional certifications. I would like BPS to meet with the staff at both schools immediately and outline any options available for licensure. To give you an idea, I was volunteering at the school today. We have a parent-led science club. It's part of the clubs that they offer to the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. The students are vibrant. They're excited to be there every day. And honestly, they don't know that this is happening. We need to reach out to our communities in a more engaged way so that they understand what's in their future and what the possibilities are with this merged community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening, shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our action items this evening include two memorandums of agreement related to collective bargaining with the storekeepers and fiscal year '23 supplemental appropriation request to the Boston City Council to support the cost of these agreements. We recall that Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan presented these tentative agreements to the committee at our April 26 meeting. I'll now turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Specifically to the storekeepers, because I think I may comment on other units. This is a small group, but clearly play a really important role as they work collecting recycling materials from schools. They help to manage the delivery, the distribution of materials to schools. And we just really want to thank them. We want to thank their union for collaboration throughout the process as we do really value their members and the work that they do. And we're very happy to be able to bring this agreement forward. And with that, we'll turn it over to Jeremiah.
Thank you, Superintendent, Madam Chair, and Committee Members. I don't really have much more to add than what Superintendent Skipper said. We have a strong relationship with this group. We were able to get to the table and get an efficient and what we believe is a fair, long-term deal with this group. So we strongly recommend that you vote in favor of it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. No questions, comments? All right. We will now take three votes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, Council 93, Local 2814, Storekeepers, and the Boston School Committee effective September 1, 2020 through August 31, 2023, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to this motion? Hearing now, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez? Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, Council 93, Local 2814, Storekeepers, and the Boston School Committee effective September 1, 2023 through August 31, 2026, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing now, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yeah.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our final action item this evening is a fiscal year '23 supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $27,803 to support the memorandum of agreement between the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, Council 93, Local 2814, Storekeepers, and the Boston School Committee effective September 1, 2020 through August 31, 2023, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our first report this evening, well, I would should say, sorry. Thank you and thank you, Mr. Hassan, for your work and thanks to the shopkeepers, storekeepers for what they do to help to keep the district running. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All righty. Our first report this evening is the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw the Boston Public Schools from the Massachusetts School Choice Program with school year '23-'24. Before I turn it over to Denise Snyder, Chief of Family Advancement, I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks. I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Chief Snyder will give the rationale, but I think was previously covered. You know, this is something that we do annually in the Boston Public Schools as well as the districts that surround us. It has historically been that we do not participate. And there are some very good reasons that range from our assignment and enrollment to the students that we're serving, to the resources that we have. And so I will turn it over to Chief Snyder to be able to detail it. And then I'm happy at the end to close out.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. And good evening, school community members. And thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, as we do each year, we are coming to you for the annual vote on inter-district school choice. And we're again asking you to vote to withdraw from participation in this program. As you know, under the state's law, there is a presumption that school districts will admit non-residents to open seats unless there is a vote to the contrary. This vote must happen by June 1st each year. We ask you to again vote to withdraw from the program based upon the following challenges. Our student assignment processes for the coming year stay very active right up through October. We project just about 50,000 students to be enrolled, a slight increase from the 49,271 this year. And this includes students who enroll by October 1st. So basically, all summer into early fall. Under the Interstate Choice Program, we would have to host enrollments for empty seats by July 1st and again by November 1st, thereby likely limiting access for current and new residents who continue to enroll through the fall. Allowing non-residents to enroll would likely impede placement of our late-arriving students. We also have space implications. The state's school choice program does not allow a district to pick only certain schools or programs for non-residents to enroll. All of our schools and our programs would be fair game even if there was just one open seat at that school. Therefore, non-residents would have the same access to all of our schools as our residents do. It is our view that non-residents would seek assignment in our most popular programs, making it impossible for some Boston residents to obtain those seats. We project these programs by peak enrollment will be fully utilized by our Boston residents. And our obligation remains to provide seats for residents of our city. There are also cost implications. Unbudgeted costs would result from the need to provide resources to non-Boston residents. Specialized programs, such as those for multilingual learners and students with disabilities, have mandated class sizes and additional staffing requirements. Non-residents who apply for specialized services would have to be provided the same services as residents. And if non-residents fill these seats before residents do, we are still obligated to find and fund additional seats and programming for our resident students. Since many neighboring communities lack some of the services and programs for students requiring specialized programs, participation in school choice could result in an influx of students from other communities requesting seats in specialized programs resulting in unbudgeted costs. Finally, there are the decisions of our neighboring communities. During school year '22-'23 this year, none of the communities surrounding the city of Boston participated in the program. In fact, a full 149 school districts, including the city of Boston, did not participate in the choice program. It is expected that these same communities will continue to recommend non-participation for the following school year. The fact that these bordering communities will not participate in the state's school choice plans means that there's zero reciprocity. Boston students would not have the opportunity to transfer to systems nearby. And therefore, there are no additional open seats for us to entertain non-resident students. As reflected in the superintendent's memo and based on the current enrollment in the Boston Public Schools, we're asking the school committee to vote again to withdraw from participation in the state's school choice plan for the '23-'24 school year. I recommend that the vote be taken by school committee at the May 24th meeting in order to meet the June 1st deadline. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder, for that report. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Don't, oh, Dr. Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
I'm always fascinated by this program. And I will also just say, part of my fascination is I went, I lived in a district that had reciprocity with another district. And I think probably one of the reasons I'm here is because I was able to go to a district, to a school outside. probably one of the reasons I'm here is because I was able to go to a district, to a school outside of my community. So part of it is a very personal sort of story and journey about sort of my curiosity around this. Given that we are no longer experiencing capacity restraints in terms of sort of the way we're thinking about the system, and at least the way we've been talking about the system, is there not a pro-enrollment strategy here that I'm somehow missing in the sort of argument as to why we wouldn't participate? And then I, the sort of first question, and then just for clarification, this would mean that i-if we allowed this to occur, students from outside of Boston could enter our system, their town or city would pay for them to be here, and at whatever the sort of cost or rate that is set by our system, our sort of funding formula. But we wouldn't be able to send students to neighboring communities who do not also participate in the program. Okay.
Um, I don't know if the superintendent wants to respond to the initial piece about enrollment, or I can.
So I'll say my take through here. So I, I think because you were not, while it is true that some schools would be under-enrolled in our district and other schools over-enrolled or waitlists, we're not allowed, were we to participate, to sanction which schools the seats would be available for. So in essence, our own students would be competing for some of the seats that are most valuable or needed with students who don't reside within BPS. So, you know, if you played that out, you take a Madison Park where, you know, from a vocational standpoint, our city students wanting and needing to get certification and vocation, you know, that would be an example where that would be taking a seat away from one of our students so somebody else could participate that lives outside the boundaries. So I think the assignment, it's also that, you know, you know, for us, we're not going to bus students an hour out or an hour and a half out to get access to the programs. None of the programs, none of the school districts around us participate in this. So, you know, realistically, this would be a one-way, not a, not a bye-way, as you experienced. So I think for all the reasons Denise put forward, this was certainly my situation in Somerville, it is certainly my recommendation here in Boston that this would not be the pro-enrollment strategy that you're speaking of. I think there's other things that are pro-enrollment strategies, which is improving the quality and offerings within our own district for our parents and our students.
Thank you, Superintendent. I just want to add that we have so many summer registrations, late arrivals, newcomers to the city, and we would have to host opportunities for enrollment to non-residents on July first, and then again November, which means that any open seats we might have filled in July first are not going to the families who are latecomers and new arrivals in the city, and that feels very, very unfortunate to, to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay. Well, thank you all, and the committee looks forward to taking action on the superintendent's recommendation at our May twenty-fourth meeting. Our main report this evening is an update on the Systemic Improvement Plan, also known as the SIP. This is a dense report. So I would like to pause, if need be, or if anyone feels the need, raise your hand, and we'll pause and just try to take one or two burning questions on a particular topic before we move on to the next session. We'll see if that can work. Before I turn it over to the team, I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks, and I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Great. So thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we'll provide this body with a high-level update on the Systemic Improvement Plan, which we also call the SIP. The SIP comes out of a partnership with the city and with DESI. We've spoken about it many times before this body. The goal of the SIP is to create collaborative and sustainable systems that increase accountability and support student outcomes in particular areas that have been identified. I can't underscore enough how proud I am of the work that the team is doing in this, in this area. You'll see in tonight's presentation that this is big work, big in the sense of critical, important, but also in volume and in complexity. And honestly, the most critical part of the work is building strong academic and operational foundations to ensure we're creating a system that really can continuously improve and yield results that are stronger and stronger in our student outcomes. The past few years have certainly brought, you know, a real level of instability in BPS. It's been hard for, for all of us, you know, for those that have been here, who, for those who were here previously, to really see the impact, you know, every day in the schools. The pandemic, I think the multiple changes and the frequency of change of leadership, they've left many feeling anxious. And the SIP's given us really, I think, the opportunity to clearly outline the work, assess what's being done, either well or not well. And it really allows us as a tool to prioritize the immediate work and, most importantly, the plan for the one, three, five year, of which much of this work is. You're going to see tonight, in tonight's presentation, and you'll hear an update on each of the seven areas, and then we will dive deeper to your point, Chair. We'll dive deeper into the foundational work that we're doing in academics and operations to support all of the work ahead. We'll then provide an update on how we're monitoring. I know that that's a big question for this body. You know, how will we monitor and measure both the implementation of the, the different tasks? And once the work's implemented, you know, how are we measuring success? What does it look like? I've repeatedly said in here and publicly that, you know, this is work that we, we, is not going to happen overnight, and it's not work that we can do alone if we truly want to create the kind of lasting change that BPS students and families and staff deserve. It's true that, you know, for too long in, in Boston and BPS, more broadly in urban ed, you know, we've put kind of Band-Aids, temporary fixes on problems, really rather than addressing the bigger systemic issues that have sort of led to the, the, the reality that we live with today. Over decades, this has really just moved the problem forward. It's made things worse, and I think, you know, we find ourselves today really facing the harsh realities of that. It's going to take focus, it's going to take our focus, it's going to take resource, it's going to take measuring our progress and creating sustainable solutions together, especially with this body, to make sure that the education BPS provides for our students allows them to, to reach the full potential that we speak about and that we're committed to. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Monica Hogan, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Data Strategy and Implementation. Monica has been leading the work with this team, doing a phenomenal job. There'll be ample opportunity to drill down and to ask questions, and I'll look forward to, to doing that with the committee later on. So with that, Monica?
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, School Committee members. This evening, we are going to provide you with an update on the implementation of the Systemic Improvement Plan with a focus on building a strong foundation in both academics and operations so that we can provide all of our students with equitable access and a full continuum of services to meet their needs. The Systemic Improvement Plan, or SIP, as you'll hear us refer to it tonight, is a three-year plan that is focused on system-wide improvement. It was agreed to by the City of Boston, Boston Public Schools, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESI, in June of two thousand and twenty-two. Broadly speaking, the goal of the SIP is to create collaborative and sustainable systems that increase accountability and support student outcomes. We know we must build strong foundations for these systems to be impactful and lasting. This slide outlines the seven BPS commitments from the Systemic Improvement Plan, which are focused on special education, multilingual learners, transformation schools, student safety, transportation, facilities, and data. There is too much work here to cover in depth tonight, so we will provide you with a high-level overview with more details on each of the focus areas included in the appendix. The SIP included a set of specific milestones and deliverables within each focus area. These deliverables were completed throughout the fall and posted to the BPS website. Several of those milestones called for the district to commission reports in different areas. This slide outlines the reports received thus far as well as two reports related to facilities that are forthcoming later this calendar year. Each report includes findings and recommendations for the district to consider as we move forward with implementing systemic change to meet the commitments laid out in the prior slide. Given the reports we've received, we have been focused this spring on bringing these reports together in order to develop a coordinated action plan across these seven commitments. This process includes identifying the portfolios of work and what we believe are the key levers or strategic initiatives that must be accomplished in order to move the district towards meeting the SIP commitments. Assessing and reviewing the findings from these reports to deeply understand our current state. How did we get here, and what work we must stop doing, and what work we need to start doing? Planning out actions that need to be taken right now, this summer and next school year, using the Racial Equity Planning Tool. Identifying timelines for this work over the next three to five years. Creating cross-functional teams to tackle these complex and interdependent challenges. The superintendent's organizational structure has been set up to ensure this collaboration can and does occur. Begin engaging various stakeholders, in particular our families, as we develop these plans. Understand what resources may be necessary to ensure implementation, some of which you saw as part of the FY twenty-four budget proposal. And developing a strategy for monitoring the ongoing implementation of this work and adopting continuous improvement practices so we can make real-time adjustments. This work is complex, and some of the different projects you will hear about are in different stages of this planning process. We've shared a bit about the process we have undertaken this spring as we work to bring these reports together. As we shared on the first slide, we know we must build strong foundations in order to be successful. We think about the seven commitments in the SIP as three key academics areas and three key operations areas, with data playing a key role across the organization. Tonight, we will go deeper into the development of foundations in both the academics and operations areas of the SIP. And I will now turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Linda Chen, Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics.
Thank you, Monica. I'm pleased to provide an update on the academic components of the SIP. I'll start first by providing an overview of work we've completed this school year and some emerging evidence of progress. Then I'll share some more about our commitments to continue to set a strong academic foundation and our goals for the rest of the school year, the summer, and for the next school year. For each, I'll highlight an example of work completed this year. Please feel free to refer to the slide and appendices for additional details. For Transformation Schools, Executive Director of School Transformation, Mike Saban, presented just last month for the third quarter update on progress to date. So I will simply note that we've consistently implemented an instructional rounds process that resulted in over one thousand one hundred observations. In these instructional rounds, we've been, we've seen evidence of progress towards the implementation of equitable literacy instructional elements that include writing, reading, discourse standards, and the degree to which students are doing the heavy lift of learning. In the area of special education, we have launched multiple interdepartmental project teams to address systems to support and monitor compliance, many of which are in the recommendations from the Council of the Great City Schools reports. You can see more of the examples of our work to date on the slide. Finally, we view the work to support our multilingual learners as shared work. For example, we are creating district infrastructure to begin expansion of bilingual programs and world heritage language programs while strengthening our existing programs, all in pursuit of increasing access to native language for more students. I would also like to highlight that the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, in collaboration with partners, including the EL Task Force, have achieved some important work this year, including the highest compliance levels to date of multilingual learners receiving appropriate English as a Second Language, or ESL, minutes, instruction type, and grouping. Our shared commitment is rooted in our opportunity and achievement gap policy, where every child in every classroom has the same opportunity to achieve the greatness within them as anybody else. Every child should have unfettered access to every conceivable tool to unlock the greatness within them. In order to act on these commitments, we must strengthen our foundation. This year, we are implementing and strengthening Tier One instruction and implementing multi-tiered systems of support. I'll talk more about this. While working with the team to develop our coordinated action plan, we not only identified specific key actions for each of these academic areas, but have also identified foundational structures and systems we need to strengthen essential, that are essential to our success across all academic commitments. We are approaching this work knowing that we need to ensure all of our students have full, equitable access to high-quality instruction and a full continuum of services that is personalized to their individual needs, especially our students with disabilities and multilingual learners. To expand on this further, this means the following things must be true. So on this slide, the first two really work hand in hand. The first one, being the most foundational, is ensuring that every student feels a sense of belonging. This means centering the identities of our students and cultivating communities that truly value cultural, linguistic, and neurodiversity as assets. Again, working hand in hand with the sense of belonging is also making sure that all students have access to intellectually engaging, complex texts and tasks and learning experiences that center their identities and assets and prepare them for success. This is reflected in what we have been engaging in this year with our instructional rounds by region, as an example. Our students cannot reach grade-level expectations if we do not provide them with this access every- with this access every single day in order to attain those skills. On the third bullet, I'll talk more about that on the next slide, but all students need to have access to additional supports based on their needs. This is about having a multi-tiered system of support that ensures we leverage our universal screener to see how every student is doing and assess if additional supports are needed, and then to progress monitor and check on how those things are going. The last set of bullets on this slide, I think of as we consider access for all students, we need to ensure there are specially designed instruction with a focus on universal design and language supports that provide access to grade-level learning, whether it is specific students with disabilities or multilingual learners, and also multilingual learners with disabilities. It is important wherever a child is, they are fully included and are fully given access to Tier One grade-level instruction. In order to fully realize this commitment and practice, we need to fully and consistently implement multi-tiered systems of support, often referred to as MTSS, across all our schools and to strengthen Tier One support across the district. On the next slide, oftentimes, we talk about MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, and Tier One Instruction, and we just want to take a moment to make sure the larger public understands these foundational elements. Multi-tiered Systems of Support, or MTSS, is a framework to organize differentiated support to students. Tier One is part of that multi-tiered systems of support and applies to what all students should be getting. For instance, you can think of this as whole-class instruction, as an example, where all learners are together for learning, reading, if you will, complex text that is at their grade level. During this time, the teacher is also not only teaching to the text, but also tailoring his, her, or their instruction of grade-level work to meet the needs of the students in that particular class. So Tier One is for all students. Tier Two would be additional supports for smaller groups of students. For example, participating in a reading specialist group three times a week. Tier Three is considered intensive support, and often that is individualized supports. For example, one-on-one reading support for a student. When we say we are focusing on strengthening Tier One instruction, we are focused on ensuring universal, high-quality, rigorous instruction and services that are provided to all students, inclusive of students with disabilities, multilingual learners, and advanced learners. This framework is about ensuring system-wide that we can review data of how students are doing, determine how to tailor Tier One students for learning for all students, and then determine what some or few students need in addition. And importantly, to monitor their progress and make adjustments to ensure students' needs are met. Throughout this process, families should be consulted and informed of how students are doing and if any additional supports are provided. Throughout the school year, the team has been working hard to establish the systems and obtain the resources necessary to ensure that Central Office is able to provide stronger support to schools in establishing or enhancing MTSS and continuing our focus on equitable literacy. For example, this work included launching the regional model of support for schools, which has led to strengthening the relationship between schools and Central Office. This model then helps provide more strategic, coordinated, and streamlined support to schools across several departments than in the past. We also launched our District Curriculum Accommodation Plan. Here's another set of letters you hear us say sometimes, D cap. This D cap is a framework that's determined by DESI and required of each district. Our D cap lays out clear expectations for high-quality, rigorous, grade-level, Tier One instruction with appropriate accommodations for all students, using the principles of universal design and culturally responsive teaching. We've also been identifying and securing high-quality instructional materials for all schools, implementing equitable literacy through the observation tool that I spoke of earlier, and defining universal expectations for all of our schools. Central Office Departments will be responsible for supporting schools in implementing these expectations through structures like the regional model and a newly created self-assessment for school communities that will help inform the support they need. Our work this summer will be focused on further refining some of these structures, such as the Equitable Literacy Observation Tool and the Regional Model. These deliberate improvements will be based on data, feedback from our schools, quality school plans, and other needs of our district that we have identified and informed and are informed by the reports mentioned earlier. Professional development for both staff in schools and Central Office staff will also be occurring in order to support them so that there is planning that is essential to establishing the foundation for access and continuum of services for our students. Next school year, we plan to pilot MTSS coordinators in schools to support that multi-tiered systems of support to be implemented in every school. We also plan to deploy additional reading interventionists, utilize our universal screener data, or a common consistent assessment across all schools, to inform individual student needs for instruction and potential additional services. We also plan to continue staff development with a focus on supporting multilingual learners with and without disabilities, students with disabilities, and inclusive practices for all students. We will also conduct quarterly data reviews to monitor progress aligned with our universal expectations and regional supports. Now, I will turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Sam DePina, our Deputy Superintendent of Operations, to discuss the operational components of our shared.
Yeah. Before we move on, I just want to check in to see if anyone has a burning question around academics before we move on to operations. Okay. I think we're good. Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the School Committee and the BPS Committee joining us this evening. I'm excited to share an update with everyone about the work our Operations Division has completed in collaboration with many partners this school year and to acknowledge some emerging evidence of our progress. I'll highlight an example of work completed this year, and you can refer to what is on the slides for more information. In the focus area of student safety, we formally launched the BPS Help Line and dedicated a problem resolution system team. We've also created community connection coordinated positions to build relationships and empower students using restorative practices. For examples of our work in our Transportation Department, I'd like to highlight the launch of our Transportation Advisory Council. Transportation Advisory Council has met three times, and I know the team has shared insight into our transportation operations. We value, and we value the feedback of our parents, students, BPS Central Office, and school staff. With regards to early indicators of our progress, we're pleased to share that the team has seen improvements in on-time performance and capture of GPS arrival data. They've also hired 188 drivers, including 117 provided with paid CDL training. And the team has hired 135 monitors in the past year. Finally, in the area of facilities, I want to highlight that our cross-functional team has held over forty focus groups and community meetings to inform the future design of BPS schools. We've taken more, we've talked more in-depth about that area of facilities in the next few slides. As Dr. Chen noted, our shared commitment is rooted in student access to the same opportunity to achieve greatness within them as anyone else. Every child should have unfettered access to every conceivable tool to unlock the greatness within them. What does this mean in our operations? Our shared focus and commitments are to ensure that every student gets to and from school safely and in a timely manner. All students have access to a welcoming and safe environment. All students have access to healthy, energy-efficient, and inspiring environments that are conducive to teaching and learning. All students have access to schools, facilities, that have sufficient space to provide a range of academic enrichment and support programs and a full continuum of services. We are doing foundational work to act on these commitments. This year, we are creating a coherent, comprehensive, long-term facilities plan in partnership with others that will guarantee access and a full continuum of services to every student. What does that all mean? Here's what the School Committee and the public can expect in our Long-Term Facilities Plan that is due at the end of the calendar year to DESI as part of the Systemic Improvement Plan. Long-Term Facilities Plan will be informed by the Facilities Condition Assessment and the Pre-K Six to Seven Twelve School Design Studies. The Facilities Condition Assessment, or FCA, is an objective industry-standard analysis of building conditions conducted by Bureau Veritas. Data from the FCA will provide accurate and robust facilities information, including current conditions, life estimates, replacement costs, and detailed asset inventory across the district. The Pre-K Six and Seven Twelve School Design Study include educational specifications and a capacity analysis, including space use diagrams, design guidelines, scenario planning for timelines of major projects, and a prioritization rubric for shared decision-making on major projects. Major components of the studies include the prioritization rubric and will undergo public review before completion. The facilities master, the facilities plan itself will include maintenance report to keep buildings well-maintained, functional, and aligned to our vision of a 21st century education, a roadmap for new buildings and major renovations, a framework for decision-making on mergers, closures, and new buildings, and a timeline for making those decisions. So why is this work so important? Our commitment to inclusion and expansion of early childhood education has shifted our standards for what spaces are required in every school. Combining elementary schools in one shared facility, wherever possible, or across two campuses, creates a continuous pre-K Six pathway, leads to more efficient use of classroom space, and frees up physical space for services and supports outside of the traditional core classroom. Schools that have had at least two full strands are better able to support teacher collaboration, staffing levels that facilitate inclusive educational models, and an expansion of academic enrichment and support programs for students. Chief Stanislas from our Capital Planning Division and Chief Eccleston from our Schools Division recently presented plans to the School Committee and the public regarding what we mean by a full continuum of services, and I want to highlight that work here briefly. This side, this slide illustrates a set of models that inform the way we think about school organizations in the future. I want to be transparent that these models reflect a range of inclusive options in substantially separate spaces, delivered based on what is written in a student's IP. The model on the left reflects a minimum of what we might expect for our schools. There are spaces in the pink and green that can be used in a variety of ways, including specialty classrooms and spaces for pull-out services. The model on the right reflects a four-strand model, which is the preferred model as we think about our buildings in the future. We must be sure that our buildings have spaces to allow for a full continuum of services, as well as ensuring that additional spaces are available, which allows for students to have access to a range of specialty and enrichment classes, as well as space for therapeutic services. So how does this translate to work we're doing and work we will do in the coming year? This year, the team has done the following. Launched the process to create the Facilities Condition Assessment with Bureau Veritas, our vendor. Posted focus groups and community engagement efforts for the Pre-K Six and Seven Twelve School Design Study. This includes a walkthrough of every school to gather data for a comprehensive capacity analysis. We created two merger school design teams and introduced proposals to the School Committee. Address deferred maintenance, for example, painting, roofing, radiator covers.
Sam, can you slow down a bit, please?
Sure. Sorry. We've awarded contracts for bathroom renovations for 11 of the 16 schools. We've managed ongoing major renovations in planning and design work for new projects. This summer, we'll release that Facility Condition Assessment. Award contracts for bathroom renovations for the remaining five schools. And manage ongoing major renovations. Next school year, our goals are to, one, release both the Pre-K Six and Seven Twelve School Design Study and Long-Term District Facilities Plan. Implement, monitor, and improve automated maintenance systems. Complete bathroom renovations for all 16 schools. Manage ongoing major renovations. And with that, I'll now turn it back over to Monica. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DePina. As you can see from the highlights shared by Dr. Chen and Dr. DePina, the work of the systems improvement is complex and must be cross-functional if we are to deliver the change our students and families deserve. The district is committed to following through on our commitments. This work requires high-quality implementation monitoring, which includes developing project plans that will be closely monitored by the Office of the Superintendent. We are utilizing the MOCA framework from the Management Center to delineate roles and responsibilities within this complex cross-functional work. That framework is detailed on the right. The most important thing to take away from this framework is that we are committed to identifying key roles and responsibilities for each major project. We believe this will help us clarify the work streams and enhance accountability. We will also conduct monthly reviews of implementation and implement cycles of continuous improvement focused on the following key questions. Did we do what we said we would do? How well did we do it? And did it make a difference for kids? And how do we know? We'll continue to come back to School Committee with periodic updates as this work continues to move forward. It is complex and requires strong collaboration and monitoring, but we are committed to putting the systems into place that are necessary to ensure success. This concludes our presentation for this evening. I know we just gave you a lot of information, so we want to make sure you walk away from tonight's presentation with at least these three things. This is big work that must be done right and will take time, but we must act with urgency. We must build lasting systems and structures. We must build lasting systems and structures that work across the district and can be sustained. And finally, our work must center our most vulnerable students. The work of both our academics team and our operations team must be focused on providing equitable access and a continuum of services so that all of our schools can meet the needs of every student. Um, and I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair, for questions.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. DePina, Dr. Chen, and Ms. Hogan, um, for the update. And thank you to your entire team for your work on these critical issues. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. And I'm sorry, Ms. Blanco Garcia, I saw your hand raised too late, so I'd like to begin with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for, for, por el reporte. Este, ahorita levanté la mano porque no quería que se me fuera la pregunta.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. I raised it here for the purpose of making sure that my question did not go away.
En cuanto en la lámina diez, pude ver que ustedes tienen programado para este año académico, una herramienta que es habla de la observación de la alfabetización.
So according to slide 10, I was able to see that there is a tool available, a tool available for literacy in particular.
Entonces quiero saber, porque dice que están implementando, ¿verdad? ¿Qué están haciendo ahora mismo? ¿Cómo, cómo pueden, cómo están haciendo esto en las escuelas? Eh, durante la ronda de instrucción.
My question in particular is how this tool is being implemented. I'm referring to the tool on slide 10 that is regarding, uh, literacy. How is this tool being implemented at the present time?
Y, y la segunda pregunta en ese mismo orden es saber cómo están midiendo el impacto. ¿Cuál es la data de que han, qué, qué está pasando? ¿Cómo ha sido de diferente después de la observación? El resultado de los estudiantes.
After the observations were made, evaluated into results and the data insights and all the information available, what is the impact that this tool could have based on data insights, data analytics? And that is my second question.
Thank you, um, for your question, um, School Committee Member, Blanco Garcia. Um, the tool that I referenced, um, on slide 10 is our Equitable Literacy Tool, and it has been used, um, in all of our professional learning communities this year, uh, across all of our regions and also on a regular basis in our transformation schools, and that is what Mike Saban spoke about last month. I'll start with some high-level information and then also, um, ask, uh, Drew, Dr. Eccleston, if he wants to add anything here, but that tool is focused on looking at a number of things. When we go into a classroom, we're looking for to what degree students are actually reading grade-level complex texts and engaging in tasks that are culturally and linguistically responsive. So what we know is that students do better if they have access to that type of rigorous text and task. It can be in English Language Arts, it can be in science, it could be in any subject. But when we come together each month, we go into classrooms and we look at what students are doing. It also includes what students are doing in terms of writing and to the degree that they can write at grade-level standards. We are also looking at the conversation that students are having, and this is particularly important with our multilingual learners in terms of their language development in understanding their tasks and the grade-level work that they are doing. Another example is we look for what degree, we know that learning happens when students are challenged with the, the, just the right amount of challenge and are working together actively. So what we look for is to what degree are the students engaged rather than just listening to the teacher the whole time? So those are some examples of what we look for every time we're in classrooms. In between these monthly meetings with principals, principals are also visiting classrooms with their school superintendents using the same tool. This year, it actually is used in a Google Doc so that we can actually quickly capture trends of what we are seeing. So for an example, we were seeing that of all the different things that I talked about, we saw very little writing that was happening, and if you think about the presentation that Mike Saban gave last month in 1,100 observations, so it wasn't like just here and there. That was a very strong trend where we did not see our students engaging in that grade-level writing in rigorous ways, and so as a follow-up, we would provide professional learning and resources to help schools focus on the things that we were not seeing as regularly. Another source of data that we use is this is observation data, but then there's also data in terms of how students are actually doing and reading. So we like to compare how students are doing in terms of their work and their assessments as well as what we are observing. And part of the work of the school superintendents is working with their principals to look at both types of data so that they can make sure they can provide the teachers and the educators with the best supports and resources that are needed to support the students. So part of what I also talked about with progress monitoring is to constantly look at that and make adjustments so that we can continually improve at what we're doing.
Gracias. Mi otra pregunta es con relación a la contratación de maestros.
Thank you very much. Another question I have is regarding hiring of the teachers.
Para nosotros poder lograr, sobre todo a nuestros estudiantes que son, que están, tienen el inglés como segundo, el idioma, y puedan tener una, una alfabetización, el idioma nativo, debemos pensar en cuántos maestros queremos contratar, cuánto estamos contratando, y en ese sentido, me gustaría saber cuánto maestro exactamente ahora mismo ha contratado ustedes para eso.
This is very critical and very important. If we're looking at the English language learners population, if we're thinking about the literacy of their native language as well, it is important to consider the rate of teachers. How many teachers are we hiring considering this piece of information, the literacy and native language and the English language learners as it has to do with the hiring of teachers?
About the hiring of teachers or the observation data.
About the hiring of teachers.
About the hiring of teachers.
Yes, that is a very critical component, um, not just in a dual language or bilingual program, but to have teachers that are bilingual so that our students can get native language instruction in any setting. We're continuing to, uh, recruiting the teachers, um, but that, that is certainly an area that we are focused on as part of the plan here.
Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Sorry, I was trying to get off mute. Um, just a follow-up question to Ms. Blanco Garcia's, uh, first question, just around the equitable literacy approach. I'm just curious, um, Dr. Chen, sort of in this strategy, and maybe it just, it was missed in the, I didn't, I didn't hear it in the presentation, right? Like, we talk about sort of two moments in a young person's reading journey, like the sort of learning to read versus reading to learn, and so we were talking about this sort of text in class, and I suspect that we're talking about in, particularly in the sort of reading to learn phase where we have the sort of reading comprehension skills, all of the building blocks, reading of science stuff, uh, that we know kids need. But I, I didn't hear us talking about sort of early literacy in our schools, and I suspect so much of our performance, I think we all know this to be true, like so much of our performance outcome concerns are deeply tied to the sort of early literacy struggles that exist bef, before a kid has to perform at that sort of level. So anything you want to share with us there about, uh, what our assessments have found about the current system and then what the intervention is?
Um, so thank you for that question. Um, that is another element of the equitable literacy tool that we look for when we go into classrooms, is that explicit and systemic, um, phonics and phonemic awareness, um, the foundations of reading, that very evidence-based work that you mentioned. That is part of what we are also looking for, and that is certainly in our, typically in our early childhood classrooms, but also there are intervention classrooms in the older grades that that is needed too. So it's for us when we're looking for that, it's not always limited to just the early grades, but that is work that we have shifted quite a bit, and I want to really credit Dr. Eccleston, the team, um, from last year to this year, really working hard to make sure that we are pivoting as a system from the sort of leveled readers, guided reading, reading workshop reliance to really focusing on what's evidence-based and what our students need to do. As you said, the sort of learning to read portion of the work. Um, and it really is a solid foundation that we need to build. Over the years, in our focus curriculum, for instance, in the early childhood grades, we have added and really bolstered the work with phonics and phonemic awareness to make sure that students get that full comprehensive set of skills that are needed, and that is something that we, we track also through our MAP fluency data as our universal screener. So we look for trends of what's happening there, and then we make adjustments. And so every month, that is also something that our principals are actually doing with our equitable literacy coaches and actually looking at student data from the MAP fluency data as well.
And what, thank you for that, and is there, and I guess this is where these presentations are always hard because it's like the big picture, which we value, and then credible work that folks are doing or trying to implement or planning to do, but I am curious about the sort of assessment. You know, as we've gone on this journey, what have we found? How many of our elementary schools are not, uh, we're not using phonics programming, and so I'm, I'm just trying to understand sort of the state of the problem in a deeper way, um, further than just like what the state told us, uh, in those communications. It's sort of like, well, what have we also uncovered, given that in many ways this has been a planning year?
So I'll start and also have Dr. Eccleston follow up. We can also provide the, the school committee members with some additional information as needed. We did, um, really conduct, uh, sort of a survey of what, um, schools are using, and to your point, we really are doubling down on high-quality instructional materials. And so, um, we have required, moving into next year, this is something that has been happening, but now we're moving forward to really double down, and we're very clear with schools that they must use a vetted, high-quality instructional set of materials and curricula. We have gone through a process for district-supported curricula as an example, and now we have said to schools, if you want to use the district-supported curriculum, we will make sure we order and you have what you need, and there's quite a bit of an effort right now making sure that all schools have those materials. If schools determine that there is another evidence-based vetted material, they can also put in through the process for that to be approved, if you will. It also needs to go through a racial equity planning tool process at the school level, and they would be submitting that to us for review so that we, we, what we want is to make sure that every school is using these high-quality instructional materials, and I really want to also name that Leslie Ryan Miller has been leading that effort, um, very meticulously. Drew, I saw your camera on early. I don't know if you wanted to add some things to what's happening here.
No, I just get so excited on this topic. Uh, I think it's a really important question and really appreciate it. I, I did want to make one point of clarification, at least from my perspective, um, that this work toward the shift, um, toward a shift toward, um, equitable literacy and the science of reading, I think, happened well before, uh, the DESI review in the spring and the work, um, that came out of the Systemic Improvement Plan. I think this is work that BPS has been leading within the Commonwealth, uh, for, for a period of time. I think it is the most critical work we can do, and I think we have gone from a system that, from the last time I was in the BPS that I often referred to as let a thousand flowers bloom around literacy instruction to a small number of reading programs that are backed, um, by important organizations such as curate and ed reports that are high-quality. And in every single one of our schools across the K to eight, we see examples of strong phonics programs such as foundations integrity at the core of what we're doing, and this is really critical to the reading development and progress in literacy for our students.
I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate this work, um, just deeply. Can I ask one more question about transformation? Am I out of time? Okay.
Yep, I'm on time. Mr. Mator, do I see your hand up?
Yeah, uh, sorry. Um, I have a quick question about the, the MOCA framework. Um, I just am kinda, um, with like a little more information on who exactly, uh, will be reviewing that. Um, uh, like free pro, projects and, and like, um, and also like, um, just any other general information you would have on the review and process of, of, um, of it.
Sure.
Yeah.
So this framework, um, comes from the Management Center um, and is really a way to help organizations, um, think about the different roles and responsibilities that are, um, needed within complex projects. So it's similar, there, there's other frameworks that are similar that you, uh, may have heard, heard of, um, but essentially helps identify who is sort of the, the primary owner of the work, um, who's going to be held accountable, who's responsible for approving the work, and who are the other stakeholders that need to be engaged? Um, when we, we think about much of this work or almost all of this work, um, it, it's really not possible for a single department or team to be successful and execute on any of this work alone. Um, but we know as a lot of people get involved in a project, it can get confusing of who is in charge and who is ultimately responsible for making decisions. Um, and so using this framework is a way to help us organize that, um, and it is something we'll be using, um, in our monthly reviews and check-ins, um, with the superintendent and her senior leadership team, um, around ensuring that the work is moving forward. Does that answer your question?
Uh, it, it provides context. Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. Alkins, I was muted. I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. Um, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I definitely have questions that are all over the place. Um, but I, I guess some of them I can sort of ask like offline. Um, I am curious as to, particularly with the equitable, um, like literacy, um, improvements and how you're particularly connecting this to math and science literacy and this, the data that's around that. Um, I understand, I mean, it's not necessarily part of the, the SIP per se, but it is something that we are concerned about, um, that we hope to see. that we hope to see improve in alignment with, with literacy and in, in general. So I'm, I'll start there with that question.
Sure. Thank you for that question. And, and yes, absolutely. We are, are keeping, we must keep our eye on the ball of mathematics as well. So what we are finding is that even though the equitable literacy tool may sound like we're just looking at the teaching of ELA, it really is about the level of task the students are involved in and what they're being asked to do. So we also go into mathematics classrooms. And in fact, one of the professional learning, actually the upcoming professional learning community time is specifically focused on looking at mathematics. So again, we want to make sure we are looking at observations of what students are doing and the tasks to which they are completing and whether or not they are in fact grade level. And we want to look at also our MAP data so that we can look at both how students are performing in those screeners as well as what we observe students doing so that we can really coordinate and triangulate. Obviously, the other piece would be school level assessments and data and assignments to really triangulate. How can we better improve mathematics proficiency as well for students?
Oh, that, thank you. Thank you for that. No, I just want to make sure that they like, yeah, that, that that we're, we're tracking that along with our, our, our ELA improvements. And then I think more or less a, an overall sort of comment on sort of, sort of the underlying, I think, issue that comes in with all of this, which is around particularly communication. And so I'm, I'm referring specifically to a comment that was made around for slide 18. Thinking about the implementation monitoring and thinking about those, I think those are three very good questions. Did we do what we said we would do? How well did we do it? Did it make a difference for kids and how do we know? And for me, I think the next step is, is like, if you did not make a difference, how are you communicating with the community and families around what changes you are going to be making to that process? Because a lot of what obviously what we hear at school committee meetings and via email, a lot of the times, whether it's through school merger processes or I would say more general complaints about things that are going on, it really stems from a lapse in communication somewhere. And so I'm actually very curious as to in this process, what perhaps new systems of communications you all as a district that may have formed in getting all of this together, new sense of network mapping or just new forms of communication that you have implemented so that the community is more informed and that you all are communicating better across central office and things like that.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And this is really helpful feedback for us to consider as we, you know, are, are implementing some of these new systems and ensuring that we are, are communicating. I think, you know, there, as we think about continuous improvement, it is always, you know, what is your plan? How is it going and how are you adjusting? As, you know, if, if things are not going the, the, the way you would like them to. And so I think the, the addition of how are we communicating the adjustments that we were making as those happen is really important for us to consider. And so this will happen at both the district level as well as cycles of continuous improvement at the regional level as well as we support our schools. And will start occurring at some of the different levels of the organization through the, the organizational structure that the superintendent has put in place. Superintendent, I don't know if you want to add anything or your thoughts about this?
Yeah, I, I think this is a, this is a, to me, a kind of a key difference moving forward of kind of past district practice. I, I think one is that we want to do more with dashboarding. So there is visibility tied back to impact result. And so, you know, what's also kind of in the deeper weeds of all of this are kind of the particular metrics we want to look toward to answer some like these kind of three questions. And then figuring out ways to make that visible to the community in the form of dashboarding. You know, much like we are doing with the RAP tool and its usage. So I think that's kind of one thing that you'll start to see more of. I think the second is to something that I know, Dr. Alkins, you have pointed out and Mr. Cadet Hernandez has just pointed out, but and that is that, you know, when we're talking about and we're reporting out initiatives that we're able to be able to speak to the impact that the initiative has had. But then most importantly, where it has not had impact, what we're either doing to alter it, to stop doing it, or to do something entirely different in, in order to make sure that we're, we're honoring kind of the continuous improvement. And I think that ranges everything from initiative that we might be working on to grants. You know, I, I think each of them, you know, in, in each thing that we do that we're putting resource and that's either time or money or combination, we need to be able to say what we're setting out to do with those things and then how we know that we've done them. And if we haven't, are we going to stop doing them? Or are we going to, you know, do something differently? And so I think for us as an organization, that, that's kind of the commitment of the implementation eighty percent over is to, is to really kind of look to make sure that we're evolving the system, the solution, the practice to the next level in each of these. So obviously in tonight's presentation, we, we're not going deep, deep, deep into the weeds of what that would look like. But I think in a future SIP, like in the fall, we could work through a couple of areas and actually show you the granularity that's behind some of these because it's pretty extensive. You know, in, in the MOCA framework, I, you know, I think differently than before, there is a la- layers of accountability of who is responsible and who is actually doing that monitoring as part of the, the process. So I think this is, this is going to be kind of a key piece for next year as we're in more the full throes of the implementation that will make visi- visible to the community, to you, to ourselves, what those results are. And then tie that back to our continuous improvement plan of what will change going forward.
Thank you. And, and I would say the, like, the last thing and just making sure that, I, I guess, I mean, everyone has a role like within this. But even as a committee, you know, that implementation monitoring is for us knowing when our key decisions that are come, you know, that are upcoming so that we can be prepared to, to start our review of, of data even before it gets to us to, to really think about how we should be moving forward or if we do need to make a course adjustment as soon as possible. So I, I value this and, and in the process and, and look forward to it being successful. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Gracias, Madam Chair. La lámina doce. Puedo ver que habla de un lanzamiento de evaluación del estado de las instalaciones que se llevará a cabo en agosto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm seeing that on slide 12, it says that it's
Yes.
Yeah, it's launching. The state of the installations and that it will start in August, this fall.
Ajá, pero el estado, pero resulta que nosotros tenemos varios tiempos, mucho de nuestra comunidad escolar ha estado pidiendo por mucho tiempo mejor calidad del aire.
But as it turns out, our community has been asking for a long time for a better air quality.
Y nosotros sabemos que se está trabajando para tener edificios del nuevo siglo, edificios adecuados para nuestros estudiantes. Eso está bien.
And we know that we were trying to work on getting buildings for this new century and that are buildings that are adequate for the students and which is good.
Pero qué va a pasar, qué vamos a hacer, cuál es el plan para estas escuelas que necesitan reparaciones urgentes, mejores baños, mejores filtros, que tengan filtros adecuados. Entonces muchos de, muchas de esas escuelas, yo que he tenido la oportunidad de conocerlo, no, no se necesita tanto para poder lograr reparar estas situaciones.
So what will happen? What are we going to do? What's the plan to do repairs in the schools that are urgent? Such as fixing the bathrooms or getting filters, which I have had the opportunity to go to so many schools and they, they need this. And it doesn't need a lot for, for these repairs and for these situations.
Entonces mi pregunta específica para que hoy en esta audiencia, nuestras comunidades y nuestras familias puedan saber qué, cuál es el plan que tiene, que tienen para estas escuelas que pueden ser reparadas y los, los padres necesitan saber cuál es el plan para estas escuelas y sus reparaciones urgentes.
So my, my specific question for today for this audience, that for the community and families is what's the plan? Do we have a plan? What is the plan for repairing these schools, which is urgent? It's urgent to repairs and what is the plan that we want to tell the parents? And yeah, again, it's urgent.
Lieutenant, would you, would you like me to start? Is that, is that okay?
Oh, sure. Go ahead. Yeah.
So sorry. Thank you. I thank you for that question. Mini member. The plan right now is for us to make sure we capture the data first before we start really investing in large amounts of dollars in investments in larger, long-term plans. What we found that we've done in the past is address issues really, really ad hocly and as urgent needs emerge, we, we, we invest in it. We also invest in deferred maintenance as we, as we need to repair buildings that in, in, or parts of buildings that need repair. However, what I do want to highlight and call out though is that we are doing the FCA that we've discussed. We've created a dashboard that we've tracked and rated all of our buildings and all our building repairs. And we have been addressing urgent needs currently as we wait for the FCA to get done and as we work on the broader master planning. I also want to highlight with regard to air quality, we have done a lot of national leading efforts with our air quality from fixing the windows to the indoor air quality sensors, to the different purifiers we put in the building to the point where we have been nationally recognized by the Blue Ribbon Commission for all that work. So we'll continue to make the investments where we need to in our buildings. But we believe that with the work that we were doing now to this point and leading up to the fall, we'll have a better strategic way of making more longer-term investments than we've done so in the past. And for the current investments that are needed, we'll continue to work with schools and continue to make the investments where, where we need to.
Deputy Depeña, it might be good to, to also share just the investment in this year's budget relative to painting and the other kinds of improvements that would fall under the general maintenance.
Yeah. So, so I'll have to get the exact number with me on this.
Thirty-nine million, I believe, Chief Cuda could.
Yeah. So we, so we, so we did earmark a lot of funds now for a lot of deferred maintenance that, that we've talked about. So with the painting, the roof repairs, the pointing, a lot of the window repairs that we talked about, ongoing beautification projects and just continue to keep the, upgrade the buildings as much as we can and make critical repairs to our infrastructure and our systems as well.
I think it's also, you know, we, MSBA, which we've explained, you know, to school committee is a partner of ours, not just in building new buildings, but they have a accelerated repair program. And so part of the facility's conditions report is that it will really also help to identify large ticket items like the roofs and the windows, you know, thi- things that would take a, a lot of resource in one given year. And so we're constantly putting some of our schools in that need that kind of rapid repair to be done. So those, they're always looking for the most urgent need. So they also are a partner of ours. And then many of our partners are looking to be, do beautification. So it may be painting or it could be murals or those kinds of investments. So we're, we're really trying to take all of the data and address the most urgent needs first. And then after that, be able to match the resources to try to bring the buildings along. I think to Deputy Depeña's point, the facility's conditions report will be very helpful to us because then we'll be operating off of fact across all of the buildings in a report out as opposed to what we see when we go into a particular building or what gets reported.
Okay. Mr. Cadet Hernandez. I'm just going to ask Dr. Alkins, are you looking for another turn? Cause your hand is still up. Okay. Okay. Go to Mr. Cadet Hernandez and then back to Dr. Alkins. Yeah. Okay.
I have a few questions. On the Transformation Schools slide, which I think, I don't know where it was, but wherever it was, I'm just sort of curious as an intervention and we've, haven't talked about this. Maybe it came up because I unfortunately wasn't able to attend the transformation, the larger conversation about transformation schools. But at what point is the school no longer, at what point is a school no longer viable as a option for families? Like I, and I know this is a really hard question and it's a question people don't love to talk about. So sometimes I think we skip over it. But, you know, some of those schools are not schools that are seeing an increase in enrollment. We're continuing to see performance declines. And so like with this intervention and this focus and we're doing instructional rounds and we have a new goal-setting tool, like sort of at what point is the time up and we want to push families to better, higher quality options?
So I don't know if Mike Saban is on to be able to address to the detail. It's slide 22 that I believe Member Cadet Hernandez is referring to. But Mike is on. So I don't know if Mike, you want to talk? Oh, okay. They're moving him over. I just want to give him an opportunity as the director of the Transformation Schools to answer and then I can certainly give my thoughts. I don't know if Dr. Eccleston also wants to give thoughts on this.
Yeah, I'm happy to take it. I think one, what our specific strategy is relative to school closures, which is I, what I think you might be asking about. I'm not sure that I can answer that question in this specific moment. I do think that it's true though, that there should be evidence of continuous improvement. And when there's not evidence of continuous improvement, my personal belief is that the district has as a responsibility not only to increase supports, but also to increase equal units of accountability to match those supports. And I don't, my, certainly my personal opinion isn't that the first movement on those things are school closures. Although I do think we have to take into account the larger work that we have to do connected to the Green New Deal around mergers, closures, new builds and communities where new buildings are necessary. I, I originally thought your question was a different one, which is I think also an equally important one, which is how do you then make policy to determine when a school is no longer transformation as well? And I don't think that we have good answers to that in this specific moment, but we're aware as an organization that we need to also be able to answer that question. And the superintendent has made, I think, a very wise decision, which in this specific moment, for example, with the GRU, which moved to the thirtieth percentile, eleven to the thirtieth percentile, will continue to invest in the school as if it is a transformation school. But we need to have conversations as an organization and bring policy forward about when we either ramp a school off of transformation or put a school onto the level of supports that are equivalent to Transformation Schools network because of what we see in the achievement data. And I think my personal opinion is that the achievement data must
debido a lo que vemos en los datos de logro. Y creo, mi opinión personal es que los datos de logro deben ser el centro de lo que está sucediendo en relación a nuestras decisiones. Sean, me paso a la superintendente para añadir un detalle aquí. Creo que estás ofreciendo una pregunta estratégica realmente importante que va a ser una buena parte de lo que va a pasar después del informe de evaluación de condiciones de las instalaciones.
Correcto, creo que es, así que aprecio la pregunta y todavía quiero darle a el director Saban una oportunidad. Pero, yo diré esto, creo que es una combinación de factores que nos veríamos si estuvieramos hablando de ya sabes, querer o necesitar estirar a las familias y potencialmente mirar la cerradura de, ya sabes, de una escuela. Ciertamente, la rendimiento académico es el indicador principal, pero lo que a menudo viene con el rendimiento académico es mirar por qué, ya sabes, qué está sucediendo allí, cómo están los estudiantes llegando a esa escuela. ¿Es la escuela sobreprogramada porque estamos sobreprogramando esa escuela? Ya sabes, ¿es adquisición distrital?, ¿es un rechazamiento de adquisición? Y así en realidad no tienes suficiente adquisición para realmente continuar ofreciendo cosas que son atractivas para los estudiantes para venir, porque entonces eso se convierte en un tipo de ciclo en sí mismo. ¿Es coincidente en un edificio que, ya sabes, es un edificio que no seríamos capaces de invertir en el informe de las instalaciones? Y tendríamos que pensar en mover ese edificio y así tal vez tiene sentido pensar en colapsar ese proceso y dar un inicio nuevo de una manera diferente con la comunidad. Creo que esos son los tipos de elementos que vamos a estar mirando mientras vamos más profundo y obtenemos los resultados de la condición de las instalaciones en, ya sabes, ciertamente el el dato en el otoño. Quiero decir, creo que incluso en el estado, cuando miramos a las escuelas que han estado en recebimiento año tras año tras año, no realmente vemos esas escuelas salir. Afortunadamente para nosotros, tenemos una de las mejores historias de éxito en el Burj, bajo el liderazgo de Dr. McIntyre. Ya sabes, pero eso fue, eso es un gemelito, eso es una rareza. Así que, ya sabes, creo que muchas veces cuando vemos este tipo de cultura engranada, stagnación, ya sabes, puerta de personal, baja adquisición, ya sabes, estos son todos los signos que la escuela en muchos sentidos está en apoyo vital. Y así creo que esos son, ya sabes, esos en parte serán algunas de las cosas que veremos mientras tenemos que tomar algunas de las decisiones difíciles, particularmente en los edificios que no son viables.
Sería realmente, creo que es peligroso para adultos, pero realmente bueno para niños si pudéssemos publicar públicamente qué son las condiciones de entrada y qué son las condiciones de salida o termino. Y esto es cierto para todos nosotros, ¿verdad? Como si me hubiera puesto en un plan de transformación en el trabajo, tendría benjes claros que supuse que debía cumplir y luego tomaríamos una decisión si los he conocido y si no eso generalmente significa, ya sabes, experimentaría la terminación. Y hacemos eso en todas las otras partes de nuestras vidas y las únicas personas que realmente sufren cuando no hacemos eso son los jóvenes que están atrapados en las escuelas o el sistema usa palabras como, ya sabes, cada herramienta concebible. Y sin embargo, uno de las herramientas concebibles es ser como, tienes que ir a una escuela que te va a ofrecer la oportunidad que mereces. Así que espero, sentí esto anoche cuando primeros participé en el comité y no estábamos teniendo esta conversación mientras hablábamos de agrupar el sistema de ciertas maneras. No estoy diciendo que sea toda una escuela, pero creo que tenemos que ser, al menos como comité escolar, deberíamos saber qué es la expectativa de progreso y si eso no está sucediendo, a pesar de todas las otras razones por las que puede no estar sucediendo, creo que tenemos que, ya sabes, poner nuestras camisas y tomar algunas decisiones difíciles en servicio de niños. Cómo afortunados somos, tenemos espacio y tenemos capacidad en todo el sistema.
Sí, sí, creo que la otra, la otra cosa que diría es que, ya sabes, al doctor Eccleston's último comentario sobre qué es lo que toma para salir, creo que esta es una pregunta realmente complicada porque a veces el recurso que ponemos es en realidad lo que realmente permite a la escuela estabilizar y luego hacer progreso. Y así se convierte en esa pregunta, en qué punto es reducir, ya sabes, si es autonomía sobre ciertas cosas o si es recurso, en qué punto sacar eso fuera, ya sabes, ¿empiezas el proceso de desestabilización? Así que eso es, ya sabes, creo que para nosotros, nuestra decisión alrededor de GRU y inglés para mantener es realmente estratégica para que podamos aprender, ¿verdad?, de ambos edificios y decir, ya sabes, en estas situaciones, ¿qué hace falta para realmente permitir que una escuela hacer el progreso que necesita, donde eso luego continúa desde una perspectiva del sistema antes de empezar a pensar en alterar algunas de las estructuras y recursos que les permitieron llegar allí.
Entonces surge la pregunta, obviamente, sobre recursos y como una fórmula de financiación estudiantil moderada, ¿verdad? Como si supiéramos ciertas comunidades con altas concentraciones de vulnerabilidad pueden triunfar con más soportes fuera de la fórmula de financiación, entonces tenemos que también ser honestos con nosotros mismos, que es que entonces esa fórmula no funciona. ¿Verdad?, como, y luego ya no es una escuela de transformación, es como, esta es la forma en que financiamos esa escuela y esa comunidad para lograr los resultados que creemos ser apropiados, dada las valores más amplios, ¿verdad?
Eso es, sí, creo que esos son parte de, ya sabes, en el re imaginación de un proyecto de financiación que vamos a ir avanzando. Creo que esos son algunas de las preguntas para realmente comenzar.
Sí, y no somos la única ciudad que está atravesando con una fórmula de financiación estudiantil fair o las especies de fórmulas equitativas moderadas, ¿verdad?, como creo que eso es a su lado. Es como escuelas que solo necesitan más recursos es equidad si las das, ¿verdad? Estoy fuera de tiempo de nuevo y tengo una pregunta, así que disculpa, presidente.
Estás muy a punto de terminar.
¿Puedo, puedo, lo siento, puedo decir uno último?
Sí, por favor, sí.
Seré muy rápido, pero creo, creo que esta es realmente una pregunta importante. Creo que todas las preguntas que tienen son realmente interesantes y muy thoughtful, no que normalmente no son. Pero creo que hay muchas implicaciones de gobierno, muchas implicaciones de gobierno aquí y muchas cosas de política para nosotros para continuar atravesando en las semanas y meses y años a venir. Creo que una cosa que no hemos hablado mucho de que es inherente al plan de mejora sistémica en nuestra asociación con DESI que creo que es realmente crítico es el trabajo que originalmente se refería a como el marco de gestión de rendimiento, pero lo que estamos refiriendo como un plan de mejora continua en el distrito. Y una cosa que creo que hemos luchado con como un sistema que ha sido muy difícil para nosotros es que no hemos tenido un conjunto de expectativas universales de cosas que deben ser verdaderas en todas las escuelas BPS, tanto en términos de las cosas que valoramos en términos de datos de resultado, pero también las cosas en términos de práctica que debe suceder. Estoy realmente orgulloso del trabajo que hemos llevado en colaboración con nuestros interesados internos al determinar qué debe ser verdadero en las escuelas BPS en relación a métricas de resultados de estudiantes y cosas en relación a la evidencia de práctica que debe ser verdadera en todas las escuelas. Y creo que en una presentación más tarde, obviamente no esta noche, creo que es importante que hablemos de esto en el contexto de las preguntas que el Sr. Cadet Hernández está preguntando, que es, ¿cuál es la evidencia o no evidencia de que cada una de las escuelas en nuestro sistema está haciendo mejora continua? Y cuáles son las implicaciones para lo que hace el sistema cuando eso no está sucediendo? ¿Cuáles son los niveles de soporte y cuáles son los niveles de responsabilidad en términos de la forma en que estamos interviniendo y los difíciles que tenemos que tomar delante de nosotros? Pero hay cosas que deben ser universalmente verdaderas y también deben haber sistemas que están demostrando que el oficio central es responsable por proporcionar los tipos de soporte que nuestras escuelas y nuestros líderes escolares necesitan para hacer mejora continua. Y cuando ese mejora continua no sucede con altos niveles de soporte, debe ser cumplido conversaciones realmente difíciles que están conectadas a unidades iguales de responsabilidad. Y así creo que podemos presentar esto en el futuro, pero creo que es una característica realmente importante del trabajo que hemos estado haciendo durante las últimas semanas y meses y hemos estado hablando con nuestro principal core sobre ello. Y lo bueno de ello es que dicen, como, estas son las cosas que el sistema ha estado hablando sobre durante los últimos dos años. Estos son los importantes, arrancemos nuestras mangas y hagamos este trabajo juntos.
Gracias por eso.
Gracias. Doctor Alkins.
No, gracias en realidad por ese comentario porque eso iba a ser mi pregunta porque es, por primera vez, en realidad lo he visto en slide diez donde dice, como en el inferior, definir expectativas universales para las escuelas y no tengo realmente ni idea de lo que es. Y así, y creo, ya sabes, al punto de Mister Cadet Hernández, quiero decir, eso es algo en un nivel escolar de ya sabes, ¿cómo definimos qué es el límite de tiempo en si nuestras escuelas ofrecen instrucción de calidad mientras definimos eso o no ofreciendo eso? Y cuánto tiempo, ya sabes, ¿nos sujetamos a nuestro cuerpo estudiantil para pasar por eso? Porque es un largo proceso árduo para evaluar a la gente y hacer ese proceso. Así que realmente venir con algún tipo de línea de tiempo o marco de trabajo para guiar cuando hacemos correcciones de curso es muy crucial para mantener la mejora continua, pero también como mantener esa responsabilidad, esa responsabilidad, tipo de pie a la llama, tipo de cosa. Pero estoy curioso en cuanto, sí, como, tal vez, otra vez, sí, tal vez esta es una discusión de fecha pero estoy curioso en cuanto a qué, qué expectativas universales para cada escuela en realidad son.
Sí, doctor Alkins, creo que ese es el trabajo que el doctor Eccleston's charla, hablando sobre hacer con los líderes. ¿Verdad?, es, es definir lo que se ve en los diferentes niveles de lo que estamos hablando. Así que creo, creo que eso va a ser particularmente con las escuelas de transformación, no sé, sé que Mike Saban se ha mudado para poder hablar, quiero darle una oportunidad también. Pero, ya sabes, Mike, el director Saban, ¿quieres, tienes algún pensamiento sobre eso en relación a las escuelas de transformación?
Muchas gracias, superintendente, y hola a todos. No comentaré sobre las expectativas universales, sé que hay, hay gente trabajando en eso, pero hay expectativas muy claras, comunes para las escuelas laid out a través del proceso de plan de escuela de calidad y mirado en las muchas visitas que hacemos a las escuelas y a los aulares. Solo para volver por un momento al tema de las encerramientos escolares, que fueron una intervención muy radical. Creo que la forma en que pensamos en ello es que hay una serie escalada de soportes y responsabilidad mientras las escuelas entran en transformación y luego pueden estabilizarse y comenzar a hacer progreso. Y quiero ser cuidadoso en cómo hablamos de estas escuelas también porque son escuelas realmente maravillosas y muchas de ellas, el dato de encuesta de estudiantes y padres es en realidad bastante positivo. Así que puede haber factores impactantes de logro, pero también hay muchos factores positivos y grandes líderes y maestros y familias y niños. Y así, aumentar el soporte y aumentar la responsabilidad y estar presente regularmente en las escuelas es la estrategia clave que tenemos en place ahora. Y la otra cosa que agregaría sería que cuando era director de una escuela como esta en el pasado en BPS, no había realmente un oficio o una estrategia hasta el punto que ahora. Así que creo que hemos tratado de crear como un distrito y estoy feliz de poder ser parte de esto, una forma de entrar en estas escuelas y proporcionar este apoyo aumentante y ser muy visible y presente para asegurar que no llegue al punto que, que estamos hablando. Así que muchas gracias por la pregunta y la oportunidad de hablar.
Gracias.
No, gracias, gracias por la respuesta y dos otras cosas que aprecio en este informe y que espero ver, bueno, que me gustaría ver como avanzando y estoy muy seguro que DESI también es para la mejora sistémica, es también pensar en cómo estamos monitoreando y rastreando nuestro progreso en reducir el absentismo crónico y luego específicamente llamando a el achievement de los estudiantes negros. Ya sabes, para, para nosotros usar un instrumento de planificación de equidad racial, pensaría que hay un plan en place y sé que hay un par, definitivamente un montón de gente en este call que ya está trabajando en ese campo. Así que quiero, ya sabes, ciertamente reconocer eso. Pero solo sé como avanzando que eso es algo que creo que necesita ser más explícito en este, estas, estas medidas de progreso.
Gracias. Superintendente, ¿querías responder antes de pasar adelante?
No, solo iba a decir que estoy completamente de acuerdo.
Okay.
Y al punto de doctor Alkins, hay, hay grupos que están trabajando y, en realidad, en la forma particular del absentismo crónico, la atendencia es uno de los indicadores que estamos monitoreando este año. Pero creo que el impacto en el achievement de los negros, el impacto en, bueno, en múltiples grupos, impacto, estudiantes con discapacidad, estudiantes multilingües con, con discapacidades. Hay grupos particulares que necesitamos ser extraconscientes, dado que en el pasado históricamente el logro, su logro y oportunidad ha sido tal un desvío en comparación con el resto del sistema. Así que cien por ciento estoy de acuerdo con el doctor Alkins y estas son, estas son las cosas que tendremos oportunidad en otras presentaciones para poder ir más profundo, para mostrar al comité.
Correcto, gracias. Tengo una pregunta que quiero hacer. Siempre estoy interesada en escuchar lo que estamos haciendo en literatura equitativa. Nuestros hijos ahora sé que están pasando por MCAS y tienen año tras año. ¿Cómo miramos dónde nuestros hijos han tenido dificultades en MCAS? Y mirar qué estamos enseñando en literatura equitativa para entender, ¿estamos mejorando ese resultado? No a través de la excavación, sino por virtud del modo continuo en el que estamos enseñando, ¿cómo estamos usando ese dato, feedback de, ya sabes, esto es donde los problemas están y cómo es eso vinculado a lo que está pasando dentro de nuestro currículo? Y ¿verdad que ver una mejora en los datos de MCAS sea una indicación de la eficacia y, ya sabes, el soporte que la literatura equitativa realmente proporciona?
Así que, doctor Chen, no sé si, yo, yo voy a responder a un nivel y puedes querer tomarlo específicamente en cómo hemos incorporado dentro de la literatura equitativa, pero cuando hacemos el análisis, miramos ambos. Mira en varias formas, miramos el contenido y dónde están los desvoces en el contenido para poder ver si es eso en el currículo que se está usando, ¿es eso en la instrucción que, ya sabes, se está dando? Escuela por escuela, así que miramos las preguntas individuales y contenido, miramos el tipo de pregunta para poder ver si los estudiantes están luchando con, digamos, una respuesta abierta o corta y es, ya sabes, eso es una indicación de que tal vez no pudieron acceder al pregunta o el múltiple. Y luego backmapamos eso, ¿verdad?, a los niveles escolares para entender mejor lo que está sucediendo. Creo que en el caso de la literatura equitativa y el doctor Chen, puedes pesar, ya sabes, ese es el underpinning de por qué los principios de la literatura son enfocados en las piezas de discusión, las piezas de escritura, ya sabes, y escritura procesada, ya sabes, y el, la lectura y la comprensión de la lectura porque vemos eso en los datos de lo que los estudiantes están perdiendo. Pero, doctor Chen, no sé si quieres ir más profundo en eso con la.
Claro, claro, lo que, lo que es útil para las escuelas es cuando reciben los datos de nivel de estándares que creo que el superintendente también se refiere, los obtienen en realidad en el verano y así son capaces de revisar esa información para planear el plan de unidad general para el año. Y creo que eso es particularmente importante porque no es solo sobre los scores individuales que los estudiantes reciben, sino qué está sucediendo a nivel de estándares. Así que lo que, lo que generalmente pasa con ese proceso es que las escuelas miran esa información y dicen, okay, ¿cuáles son las cosas que podemos anticipar para ajustar en términos de nuestro currículo de nivel uno, alcance y secuencia? ¿En qué estándares necesitamos enfocarnos más? Y luego también para ser capaces de anticipar qué pueden necesitar los estudiantes en términos de intervenciones. Pero también quiero asegurarme de que mientras haya datos de MCAS, siempre queremos asegurarnos de que usemos múltiples fuentes de información para realmente, eso es realmente como, yo diría algo para nosotros decir, okay, tal vez deberíamos mirar eso y realmente mirar en realidad qué trabajo estudiantil está sucediendo y también datos de evaluación adicionales para que podamos ser realmente seguros de que no estamos solo tomando un score único en un trabajo de un día para demostrar eso. Así que, y también añadiría que dado nuestro movimiento en asegurarnos de que todas las escuelas están usando materiales de instrucción de alta calidad, tenemos más escuelas en el pasado entrando al año siguiente usando materiales de apoyo curriculum, así que lo que es útil sobre eso es que entonces Leslie Ryan Miller y su equipo de enseñanza y aprendizaje pueden realmente mirar los trendos agregativos en el información de nivel de estándares en MCAS y luego anticipar cómo se centraría su alineación de soportes en cualquier tipo de amplificación de recursos curriculares que harían y luego apoyar los liaison regionales para mejor ajustar los soportes que las escuelas individuales necesitarían en una región. So part of that are the quarterly review cycles that we are going to be doing um next year. With the regional liaisons and the school teams. Not just the school leaders, but the school teams um under the direction of the school superintendents.
Okay, thank you. I know my time is just about up and I will put my other questions to you in writing for feedback, Mr. Cadet Hernandez, you said you had one final question. I will allow you to do that. You've had your two turns. Plus time and we're trying to model moving forward, so.
Thank you. The question I have just is around MTSS support. In my understanding is. MTSS is sort of like, you know, s- school basics one O one, right? Like that's, this is more of like the framework of how we run. A school with complex needs, right? And so, I guess as we're going in and I I'm understanding a focus is on. Strengthening tier one support, we're talking about all the ways we're thinking about curriculum system-wide equitable literacy, et cetera, et cetera. I guess in the assessment, because this is what I'm understanding this year. As being, right? Like this, we've, we're doing inventory around our systems, our structures, our routines, our schools. To be able to determine what comes next, which is why we're not seeing outcome data today. We're seeing a sort of. Uh, a theory of action and a theory of change. And so what I'm not seeing here is like in that assessment around. Schools requiring the needing to strengthen tier one supports, I guess as you look at the MTSS framework. Like, what percentage of our schools fall in each category? And I don't know what categories you're using, but in mine, I use a sort of. You know, maybe great, good, concerning, failing. And I use the word failure often because I feel like sometimes as a system we are afraid to say something is failing and so we're like, more support, more support. Sometimes we are failing, which means we are failing kids. So like in that structure. Or in some sort of thinking, like how do you? How do, how should we be thinking about as the governing body, where's the percentage of our schools that fall within given categories? And I don't know if that makes sense because we don't, I don't have the categories to work with, but like. As we think about scaling intervention, like what percentage falls where?
Uh, that makes perfect sense. Um, and actually. The challenge with tonight's presentation is there are so many details on any one of those given slides. And in my portion, I mentioned a self-assessment and I think what you're asking. Is actually directly related to the items that we're going to have in the self-assessment for school teams. And I want to emphasize. It is school leaders and their teams working together in collaboration to say, hey, how are we doing on this area? And so there will be, in terms of multi-tiered systems of support, several questions around that. And so we like to actually think about it as, are you in a place where you're laying the foundation for this aspect? Or are you installing where you're like not completely? Have all those pieces in place, or are you in a stage of like implementing? Or are you in a stage of like really sustaining that school wide, like it's in really good solid shape? And so what we want to do is we want schools to reflect as a team, where are we in this? And so what we learned this year from a lot of the inclusion planning teams in talking about this as a team is. You have multiple perspectives. Sometimes a school leader has a certain perspective, but a parent. Or a teacher may have a different one and it creates this conversation to say, where are we? And then that self-assessment will drive the kinds of regional liaison supports that will be provided. And so that that is partly how we're sort of going to determine um where folks think they are in the practices. That they're enacting.
So as we're there, Dr. Chen, like what percentage of schools then are not requiring additional supports? And then what percentage of schools are requiring something in the middle? And what percentage of schools are you guys experiencing as needing intensive supports? And I'm asking this for two reasons. One, this matters just sort of generally. And two, we are the body that comes to, that you, everyone comes to talk to about the budget. And sometimes we're talking about the budget without having real clarity. Around how the deployment of supports looks and feels and like a really honest conversation around like what percentage of our schools. Are where? You know what I mean? So like, if we're thinking of those three categories and it could even be back of envelope, but like, what is, where, how as a. A school committee should we be thinking about the percentage of schools that lie in each of those domains?
What what you're asking is precisely the reason why we're putting this together and I think I also want to connect this to Dr. Alkin's question regarding. The universal expectations that I'm hoping we can spend some time with the school committee on in the public. Because it is both looking at the metrics of student outcomes, which are critically important. As well as what are the practice indicators? That are happening to sort of feed that. And it is a, is a more than fair question, right? Like where are our schools in terms of their cap- capacity in? Implementing MTSS and therefore the resources. Should go towards where the needs are, right? In both of those, both student outcomes and the sort of implementation indicators.
I'm out of time, but I will just say. This, these are always the hard moments. I know I'm pushing a little bit, Dr. Chen, but we know each other from a past life, so. I am also just saying like. This is the moment too, and maybe it's the next report, where it like, it doesn't have to be perfect. But like, we can say something like, I don't know, sixty percent of our schools, we're feeling really proud of where they're at. Thirty percent of our schools like are requiring a level of serious support and. Whatever X percentage, like we have major, we have grave concerns about. And we're looking at them differently and here's how, but I'm. I, you know, I sometimes leave these conversations and it's like, I still don't get the full picture of like how, where is our system? And I love that I get like where are our system leaders thinking about how support looks and how it feels? But there's the sort of like zoom out moment that I I will, I don't think I'm gonna, I will leave tonight fully clear on. But deeply appreciate this work because it feels really thoughtful at the same time and where we're at compared to where we were. A year ago when we were having some of these conversations.
Yeah, I think the point that you're raising is 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 what Monica Hogan spoke to earlier, right? Which is that we need to put these systems in place so that we can provide you with that information. Absolutely.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
Alright, thank you. I want to thank everyone um tonight, both for your thoughtful questions and particularly from the um. Group that put together the presentations. This is incredibly hard work and we are literally just at the very beginning and we look forward. To future um updates on this critical work. And we'll now move on to public comments on reports, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers or public comment on reports.
Alright, thank you. New business? Somebody's saying something.
Hi?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Maida.
Um, so. Just a quick question, somebody in a public comment. Was reminding us about the the thing at the beginning of the year with the letter that was uh written. Um, I was just, I like where the updates are.
Superintendent, do you want to respond to that?
Um, sure, so legal is running point on that and um our understanding, having talked to um the investigator that's been assigned. Is that the preliminary reports will be available before the end of the school year for school committee.
Alright, Mr. Maida.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, that concludes our business for this evening and the next virtual school committee meeting will take place. On Wednesday, May twenty fourth at five P M. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the role?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes, goodbye.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.